Good evening.
It's time to go.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. My name is Sandra O'Connor. I would like to welcome you to the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Please note that this meeting is being conducted in person and online. If anyone participating online needs help with Zoom during the meeting, please email Luke Carter at lucas, L-U-C-A-S, dot Carter, C-A-R-T-E-R, at greensboro-nc.gov. Members of the commission are appointed by the city council and serve without pay. The commission reviews all original zoning and rezoning requests for the city of Greensboro. Each commissioner normally visits each site prior to this meeting. The procedure at all public hearings is as follows. Planning staff presents background information and makes a recommendation. The applicant will present a short summary on how he or she communicated with the neighborhood and why the request is reasonable. Other persons in favor of the request speak. There's a total of 10 minutes shared by the applicant and supporters. Speakers opposed to the request share another 10 minutes of speaking time. Those in favor of the request will share five minutes of rebuttal time. Those in opposition to the request then share five minutes of rebuttal time. Any commission member may ask questions once a presenter has completed their presentation. All commissioners are required to vote unless they have a conflict of interest. In an effort to run meetings more efficiently, the Planning and Zoning Commission may reorganize the meeting agenda. Cases in which no opposition has been expressed to the planning department and in which commission members do not feel necessitate in-depth discussion will be moved to the top of the agenda. Staff will provide a shortened presentation for these expedited cases, and applicants have up to two minutes to address the commission if they desire to provide any additional information they want the commission to know. Expedited cases will then follow the procedures outlined previously. All denied cases and all approved ordinances receiving six or more favorable votes will constitute final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. All ordinances receiving a majority of favorable votes but less than six will be subject to a public hearing by the city council. When the case is called that you are interested in, people wishing to speak online will need to use the raise hand function, and you will be called upon to speak in order in which hands were raised. Please find the raise hand function under the reaction button. People wishing to speak in person will need to come to the podium. When you are called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Please also direct all comments and questions to the zoning commission. Participants in the Zoom meeting will be able to view the meeting and speak when they are called upon. The meeting is being recorded and televised on Greensboro Television Network. In addition, the telecast is being closed captioned for the hearing impaired. I'd like to remind all commissioners before you speak if you would identify yourself for the sake of the person later transcribing the meeting. We would appreciate it, and we would like to take a moment to welcome our latest addition to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is Mr. Paul Gilmer Sr. on my far left. Welcome, Mr. Gilmer. We're glad you're here. And he has worked before on the planning and zoning, so he's familiar with our process and a welcome addition. Thank you. First, we will acknowledge any absences. Have we heard from Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Peterson just arrived.
All right.
He's right here. So we'll let him get to the dais.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson has arrived. We have two commissioners attending virtually. That is Andrew Egbert and Erica Glass. They will be attending virtually, and they will be voting on all matters. They will participate in the meeting. So we have no actual absences. First item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the September 16th as well as the October 16th, 2023 meetings. Do I have a motion?
Chair O'Connor, this is Commissioner Engel. I would move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Was that correction made?
As amended.
Okay. Great. I second that. Thank you, Mr. Engel and Ms. Maggott. We will have to take a roll call vote because we have some members virtual.
Just to be clear, is the motion for both sets of minutes or individuals?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The motion is to approve both sets of minutes. So we'll vote commissioners, and then we'll vote virtually. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. And then Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
And Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. That carries unanimously. Next on our agenda are any withdrawals or continuances?
Yes, thank you, Chair O'Connor. We do have one request to continue an item. It is item Z-23-11-013449, excuse me, 409 to 427 and 443 West Meadow View Road. The applicant is wishing to continue this to our December meeting.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on that matter? Could we have the door closed, please? That noise is filtering in.
And this would go to the December 18th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting if it's continued.
Okay, there is a motion to continue KC 2311-013409 through 427 West Meadow View Road and 443 West Meadow View Road.
Do we have anybody that wants to speak in favor or opposition to that?
We heard from the attorney representing the applicant, and they wanted some additional time for some community conversations about the eventual development. So that's why they're asking for the continuation.
And no one signed up to speak?
No one has signed up to oppose.
Okay. Chair O'Connor, this is Commissioner Engel. I'll make a motion to continue that to our December meeting.
And this is Commissioner Maggott seconding that.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Ms. Maggott. We'll take a vote on that. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous that we will continue that item. And then, as we discussed earlier, we have an expedited agenda for any items that no one has registered to speak in opposition. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, thank you, Chair O'Connor. And there's a number of these, so I'll try to go through slowly so folks can hear, just in case there's any opposition. The cases that at this point have no stated opposition either in person or online is case PLP 2323 and Z 2311001, which is for 2810 to 2812 Roland Road. Case Z-23-11002, 1217, 1219, and 1223 Boston Road. Case Z 2311003, 615 Stagecoach Trail. Case Z 2311004, 2404 Stanley Road. Case Z 2311005, 2409 Maywood Street. Case Z 2311006, 3420 and 3422 Battleground Avenue. Case Z 2311008, 709 Eagle Road.
I think it's 009.
Oh, I'm sorry, 008. Yep, there's a lot here.
Thank you.
You're right, it's 0084709 Eagle Road. Case Z 2311009, 510 Banner Avenue.
That's 10. Your numbers are off one digit, I think.
Okay. Well, I'm going to read from this book then, apparently, because that one's off. All right. Let's see, that's Banner Avenue. And then, KZ 231111, which is 2505 Fairview Street. So these items at this point have no stated opposition either in person or online that we are aware of at this point.
All right. Thank you. By the way, for everyone, we're going to rely on staff to notify the commissioners if there's someone online who needs to speak on an individual item, since we don't have access, and they will alert us. So all of those addresses that Mr. Kirkman just read have no registered opposition speakers for this evening. I want to just give sort of a last call to make sure that nobody is here to speak on any of those items. If not, we will move all of those items forward on our agenda to our expedited agenda before we hear other matters. So the first one on our expedited agenda is Z 2311001 and PLP 23-23. Could you leave it on the screen, please? Thanks. An annexation and original zoning request from County RS 20 Residential Single Family to City R5 Residential Single Family 5 for the properties identified as 2810 and 2812 Roland Road, generally described as southwest of Roland Road and southeast of High Point Road, .544 acres. Mr. Carter?
This is the zoning map of the subject property, which shows that the property is generally surrounded by County RS 20 to the northwest and the north, County RS 20 with a special use permit to the northeast, and then you see some City R3 there to the southeast, and then south of that is also County RS 20. This is the aerial map of the subject property. Subject property is currently undeveloped. You've got single-family dwellings to the northeast and south, and then to the west is an indoor recreation use that is under construction. I'm going to move quickly through the pictures. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 comprehensive plan designates the property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports both the comprehensive plans creating great places goal to expand Greensboro citywide network of unique neighborhoods offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the building community connections goal to maintain stable, attractive, and healthy places to live and raise families. The proposed R5 zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate low-density single-family detached residential development of up to five units per acre. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have at this time.
Do we have any questions? Would the applicant like to add anything for up to two minutes? It's not necessary. Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on this, and we will need two motions, first an annexation and then a zoning.
Chair O'Connor, this is Commissioner Engel. I would move that we annex the property.
Mary Skeens, second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Ms. Skeens. Any other discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Okay, that was for the annexation, and then a motion for the zoning?
This is Commissioner Engel. I'm going to make the motion. In regards to agenda item Z-23-11-001, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes this action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at 2810 to 2812 Roland Road from County RS 20 Residential Single Family to City R5 Residential Single Family 5 to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 comprehensive plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plans, future built form map, and future land use map. Two, the proposed City R5 zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Mary Skeens, second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Ms. Skeens. Any other discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December 19th, 2023 city council meeting. The next item on our expedited agenda is item Z 2311002, a rezoning request from LI Light Industrial to CD RM8 Conditional District Residential Multifamily 8 for the properties identified as 1217, 1219, and 1223 Boston Road, generally described as southeast of Boston Road and south of Norwalk Street, 5.21 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, which shows that it is currently zoned LI, and the rezoning request is to rezonate, I'm sorry, it's currently zoned LI. The rezoning request is to go from LI to CD RM8. You will notice that to the north, south, and west of the property is all LI. There's CD HI, which is heavy industrial, to the northeast, and then Conditional District Residential Multifamily 18, which is adjacent to the property on the east. This is the aerial map of the subject property, which shows that the subject property is currently vacant. You have industrial uses that surround the request on the north, south, and west of the property, and then you've got multifamily to the east. And then moving through the pictures. This is the condition that was presented by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 comprehensive plan designates the site as planned industrial campus on the future built form map and industrial on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the comprehensive plans filling in our framework strategy to encourage higher density, mixed-use, walkable infill development, and to ensure mixed-use projects both strengthen and add value to the community. The request also supports the comprehensive plans creating great places strategy to meet housing needs and desires with sufficient and diverse supply of housing products, prices, and locations. The proposed CD RM8 zoning district as conditioned ensures that the subject property will be developed in conjunction with the adjacent property already zoned, CD RM18, and the residential uses permitted in the request are supportive of the characteristics of the planned industrial district, given the features of the subject property and adjacent uses, and does not unduly impact the larger employment areas nearby the site. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, would the applicant like to add anything to the comments staff has made? If not, we will close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
This is Mary Skeens in case Z-23-11-002. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to approve the rezoning request for the properties at 1217, 1219, and 1223 Boston Road from LI to CD RM8 Conditional District Multifamily 8 to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 comprehensive plan considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plans future built form map and future land use map. The proposed CD RM8 zoning district permits uses that fit the context of surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties, and the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
This is Commissioner Engel. I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Skeens and Mr. Engel. Any further comments? I'll take a vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. This constitutes a favorable recommendation.
This one's actually a final action.
Pardon me?
This is final action.
Yes, I'm sorry. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December 19th, 2023 city council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. And while I am there, I also have to apologize for overlooking our very kind and patient council and didn't allow him to make any opening comments. So perhaps he'd like to make some intermittent comments.
Thank you for that, Chair O'Connor. If I may, just, I'll be brief here. Good evening, everyone. Much of the Planning and Zoning Commission's work this evening is going to relate to the consideration of rezoning applications, as we've already seen in these couple instances. consideration of rezoning applications, as we've already seen in these couple instances. I would remind everyone in attendance that when the commission considers rezoning applications, its determinations are based on the land uses that are allowed under the zoning district that's put forth in the application, all land uses that are allowed under that zoning district, and any conditions that have been proposed by the applicant. Again, conditions are proposed by the applicants. Land use impacts on public infrastructure are relevant in rezoning matters, and it's important to know that the commission is not here to determine all details of a development. This involves staff input and evaluation that goes beyond the scope of the commission's work. If a rezoning would generate a certain amount of traffic flow, the commissioners will have been provided with a summary traffic impact study. Meanwhile, many site-specific development features, such as the management of stormwater, are evaluated through the Technical Review Committee rather than in this forum here tonight. Lastly, concerns that are not related to land use are not germane to the commission's consideration of rezoning applications. For example, generalized concerns about crime rates or current or anticipated school capacity, and questions of who may own or develop or live at the subject property are not for the commission's consideration. Land use deals with what, not questions of who. If there are any questions about matters that are not addressed this evening, those may be referred to the planning department or the Technical Review Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I apologize. The next item on our expedited agenda is Z-23-11-003, a rezoning request from R3 Residential Single Family 3 to CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium, for the property identified as 615 Stagecoach Trail, generally described as west of Stagecoach Trail and south of West Friendly Avenue, .30997 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property and the surrounding area. It's currently zoned R3, and the rezoning request is to go to Conditional District Commercial Medium. You will notice that north, south, and west of the request are all zoned R3, and there is Conditional District RM18 to the east and CDRM8 to the northeast. This is the aerial map of the subject property, showing that it's currently undeveloped. To the north is the on-ramp for I-840 with religious assembly use and residential to the north and to the northeast. There's an undeveloped property to the east, single-family dwellings to the south, and I-840 to the west. This is the condition submitted by the applicant. And in recommending approval, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's filling in our framework big idea regarding how we arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time. And the proposed rezoning request also supports the growing economic competitiveness goal to build a prosperous, resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed. The proposed Conditional District Commercial Medium zoning district is limited only to self-storage uses that are compatible, and these uses are compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area, and can provide an appropriate transition from the high-intensity highway from I-840 to the west to lower-intensity residential uses nearby. The site's location on the scenic corridor overlay district or within that district will also help with compatibility to nearby development. With that, I can answer any questions that you have, and the applicant is available as well.
Are there any questions from commissioners? If not, would the applicant like to add any comments?
My name is Mike Fox. My address is 400 Bellmead Street, Suite 800, Greensboro, North Carolina. I don't intend to have a presentation. I'm just here for questions, if you'd like any.
Thank you very much. Any questions? If not, we will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Maggott?
Z-23-11-003, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend of the rezoning request for the property at 615 Stagecoach Trail from R3 Residential Single Family 3 to CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed CDCM zoning district permits uses that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. And three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Mr. Commissioner Peterson, a second.
Thank you, Ms. Maggott and Mr. Peterson. Any other comments? If not, we'll take a vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December 19, 2023 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our expedited agenda is Item Z-23-11-004, a rezoning request from R3 Residential Single Family 3 to CDR5, Conditional District Residential Single Family 5, for the property identified as 2404 Stanley Road, generally described as west of Stanley Road and south of Hunt Master Trail, .95 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the subject property that you see in the middle of the map. It is currently R3. The request is to take it to Conditional District R5. North, south, east, and west of the request are all zoned R3. This image is an aerial of the subject property and the surrounding area. There is a single-family dwelling on the subject property. You'll notice that north and east of the subject property and south of the subject property contain single-family dwellings. There's some undeveloped land to the west, and some more single-family dwellings to the west as well. This is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's Creating Great Places goal to create interesting and attractive places and vibrant public spaces in neighborhoods across Greensboro, and the filling in our framework goal to arrange land uses for more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed CDR5 zoning district permits uses, or limits uses, to residential uses only, and the request is compatible with uses that are present in the surrounding area. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions? There are none. Would the applicant like to make any additional comments? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
Chairman O'Connor, in regard, this is Warshay Downing. I'd like to make a motion for Z-23-11-004, 2404 Stanley Road. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 2404 Stanley Road from R3 Residential Family 3, Residential Single Family 3, to CDR5, Conditional District Residential Single Family 5, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed CDR5 zoning district permits uses that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts of the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
This is Commissioner Engel. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Mr. Engel. Any further comments? If not, we'll take a vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December 19, 2023 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our expedited agenda is Z-23-11-005, a rezoning request from R5 Residential Single Family 5 to NS Neighborhood Support for the property identified as 2409 Maywood Street, generally described as south of Maywood Street and east of West Gate City Boulevard, .44 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property. You'll notice that northeast and south of the request are zoned R5. West of the request is zoned Neighborhood Support, or NS. This is the aerial map of the subject property, showing that it is currently vacant, and there are single-family dwellings north, east, and south of the request, and commercial uses to the west. There were no conditions with this request, as the adjacent property is a straight Neighborhood Support zoning district as well. But in recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan currently designates this property as urban central, within an urban mixed-use corridor and a regional-scale activity center. The Comprehensive Plan currently also designates this property as commercial on the future land use map and adjacent to properties identified within the West Lee Street and High Point Road plan. The proposed rezoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's filling in our framework goal to transform underutilized sites and buildings into valued assets that complement their surroundings. Additionally, the request supports the Comprehensive Plan's Building Community Connections goal to maintain stable, attractive, and healthy places to live and raise families. The proposed Neighborhood Support zoning district is consistent with surrounding existing uses and existing zoning districts, and will allow greater development opportunities within the adjacent site. This request is generally compatible with the existing development trend in the surrounding area. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Would the applicant like to make any additional comments?
Madam Chair, Nathan Duggins, 400 Bellmead, Suite 800, here for the applicant, can answer questions. We've got our engineer on Zoom as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none without objection, we will close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion, please.
Commissioner O'Connor, Commissioner Peterson. Item Z-23-11-005, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 2409 Maywood Street from R5 Residential Single Family 5 to NS Neighborhood Support to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers its action to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed NS zoning district permits uses that fit the context of surrounding areas and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is responsible, reasonable, due to the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Catherine Maggott, second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson and Ms. Maggott. Any further comments? Seeing none, Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December 19, 2023 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our expedited agenda is Item Z-23-11-006, a rezoning request from R3 Residential Single Family 3 to CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium, for the properties identified as 3420 and 3422 Battleground Avenue, generally described as northeast of Battleground Avenue and northwest of Westridge Road, 1.83 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, showing that it's currently zoned R3, and the rezoning request is to take it to Conditional District Commercial Medium. And north of the request is zoned RM12, and east of the request is zoned Conditional District Office, and south and immediately west of the request is zoned R3. The aerial map of the subject property shows that there is a single-family dwelling located on the property. There's multifamily dwellings to the north, an office use, medical office use to the southeast, and single-family dwellings to the southwest, south, southwest, and then undeveloped land, or, I'm sorry, that's single-family dwellings to the west. These are the conditions that were proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the property as urban general on the future built form map and urban mixed, within an urban mixed-use corridor and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's filling in our framework goal to transform underutilized sites and buildings into valued assets that complement their surroundings. Additionally, the request supports the Comprehensive Plan's growing economic development, growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to increase and preserve the inventory of developable sites compatible with corporate and industrial uses. The proposed Conditional District Commercial Medium zoning district includes conditions that limit potential negative impacts on the surrounding area. The request is generally compatible with the existing development trend along Battleground Avenue. And with that, I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners? Would the applicant like to make any additional comments? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Look for a motion.
I can do that. This is Commissioner Engel. In regards to Agenda Item Z-23-11-006, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at 3420 and 3422 Battleground Avenue, from R3 Residential Single Family 3 to CD-C-M, Conditional District Commercial Medium, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed CD-C-M zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Peterson, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Peterson. Any further comments? If not, Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December 19, 2023 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our expedited agenda is Item Z-23-11-009, a rezoning request from CM Commercial Medium to a rezoning request from CM Commercial Medium to CD RM twenty-six, Conditional District Residential Multifamily twenty-six, for the property identified as seven oh nine Eagle Road, generally described as north of Eagle Road and east of Landmark Center Boulevard, five point six two acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, which shows that it's currently commercial medium, and the request is to rezone it to Conditional District RM twenty-six. You'll notice that north of the request is CD LI, east of the request is CD RM twelve, south of the request is CD RM eighteen, and west of the request is CDCM. This image shows that the subject property is currently undeveloped. North of the request contains auto-service use, east and south of the request contain multifamily dwellings, and west of the request is generally undeveloped land, but there's some outdoor display, outdoor storage on that use as well, on that property to the west. This is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan designates this property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan's Creating Great Places strategy to meet the housing needs of Greensboro and the desires within a sufficient and diverse supply of housing products, prices, and locations. The request also supports the Comprehensive Plan's filling-in our framework goal to arrange land uses for a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed Conditional District RM twenty-six request as condition ensures that the subject property will be developed in conjunction with the adjacent property, already zoned CD RM eighteen. This rezoning request also allows uses that are compatible with existing varied residential uses and densities in the surrounding area. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, would the applicant like to offer any additional comments? Without any objection, then we will close the public hearing, and we will look for a motion, please.
Commissioner, follow.
Dash twenty-three dash eleven dash zero zero nine. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at seven oh nine Eagle Road from CM Commercial Medium to CDM RM dash twenty-six, Conditional District Residential Multifamily twenty-six, to be consistent with the adopted GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public's interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map, the proposed CD RM dash twenty-six zoning district permits uses that fit the context of surrounding area and limits negative impact on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approvals in the public's interest.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Downing. Any further comments? We'll take a vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Keans?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within ten days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our expedited agenda is item Z twenty-three eleven dash zero ten, a rezoning request from RM Residential Multifamily eighteen and O, Office, to CD RM eighteen, Conditional District Residential Multifamily eighteen, for the property identified as five-ten Banner Avenue, generally described as west of Banner Avenue and south of Apache Street, six point two five acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property showing that it is currently split-zoned. You've got the RM eighteen in the orange and the office in the blue. North of the request is RM eighteen and office. There's light industrial to the east and office and R five to the south and R five to the west. This image of the subject property shows that it is currently vacant. There was an assisted living facility or something along those lines there in the past, but it has been demolished. North of the request is an office use and undeveloped land. There's a large-scale warehouse and shipping use to the east and other industrial uses to the southeast, single-family dwelling and undeveloped land to the south and undeveloped land and an elementary school to the west. This is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the request, staff notes the GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plans that the Comprehensive Plan currently designates this property as planned industrial district on the future built form map and as industrial on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan's filling-in our framework strategies to ensure revitalized sites will be of high quality and complement existing neighborhood character to encourage higher density, mixed use, and walkable infill development. The proposed rezoning also supports the Creating Great Places goal of contributing to Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods where residents of all walks of life have a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed CD RM eighteen zoning district limits uses to residential uses only. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition. The proposed rezoning request also allows uses that are similar to existing uses in the surrounding area and does not significantly impact the options for future industrial development envisioned under the GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan in the larger area. I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Got a question. This is the first time I've seen this. Under this item, page three of seven, environmental soils, this is the first time I've seen flood plans. Is this a flood area, or has the potential to be a flood area? It says FEMA floodway and FEMA one percent annual chance of flood hazard area.
There may be a stream on the property that has flood area, but they would have to go through permitting if they wanted to develop within that flood area. That would be part of a TRC Technical Review Committee site plan process. So generally, they would try to avoid that area.
So what does that look like if they, the technical review, answer that question? What does that look like if they?
Well, I mean, basically, there's, I think, two different things. And again, I don't want to get too far into the technical piece of it, but you've got, you know, protected stream buffers, and that's part of site plan review process. Water resources would define what those areas need to be, and they would basically stay out of those areas entirely with development. And then building code would have some things as far as keeping buildings themselves out of flood hazard areas, and that has to do with placement relative to the stream bank and some other things on there. But all of those would be addressed by the technical staff during the site plan review process, so we would make sure that they were not building in the areas that had potential flood hazard.
And that won't affect the properties to the south?
Yeah, that'll be addressed as part of site plan, too. I mean, the basic, easiest way to define it is that they would create developments that at the end of the day would not create any additional water impacts off-site than currently exist. And usually, they actually improve that with those site plans.
Mr. Kirkman, this is because of the size of the parcel, they actually come under, I'm looking down here a little later, if greater than one acre is disturbed and the BUA is increased, the site must meet the current watershed requirements. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's my understanding. So that will get to those questions on there as part of the site development. But yeah, it'll all be addressed as part of the technical analysis. Again, you know, public safety is a big thing for the cities, so we'll make sure we're not building structures within flood hazard areas. Does that answer your question, Ms. Peterson?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or comments?
Chairman Connor, in regard to, I'd like to make a motion in regard to Z twenty-three...
Let me close the public hearing first.
Yes.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make any other comments? No. Seeing none without objection, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion, please.
Now it's time. I'd like to make a motion in regard to Z twenty-three eleven zero one zero at five-ten Banner Avenue. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning requests for the property at five-ten Banner Avenue from RM eighteen Residential Multifamily eighteen and O, Office, to CD RM eighteen Conditional District Residential Multifamily eighteen, to be consistent with the adopted GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan and considers the action to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map, the proposed CD RM eighteen zoning district permits uses that fit the context of surrounding areas and limits negative impacts of the adjacent properties or on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the areas. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
This is Commissioner Engel, second.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Mr. Engel. Any further comment? We'll vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Keans?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Nay.
Mr. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Nay.
This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within ten days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. We have one more item on our expedited agenda, that is item Z twenty-three eleven dash O one one, a rezoning request from CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium, to CDO, Conditional District Office, for the property identified as twenty-five oh five Fairview Street, generally described as west of Fairview Street and north of American Legion Street, point eight eight acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, which is Conditional District Commercial Medium, and the rezoning request is to take it to Conditional District Office. North of the request is RM eighteen and Commercial Medium. You've got heavy industrial to the east and Commercial Medium to the south with office farther south. And then east or west of the property is RM eighteen. This image shows that there is, there's an existing building on the site. The most recent use was an assisted living facility. North of the request are single-family dwellings and an auto body shop, and there's a warehouse and distribution use to the east. There's a recreation center to the south and single-family dwellings to the west. This is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan designates the property as urban central. The Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use Map designates this property as residential. The proposed rezoning request supports the GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan's filling-in our framework strategies to ensure revitalized sites will be of high quality and complement existing neighborhood character to encourage higher density, mixed use, and walkable infill development. The request also supports the Comprehensive Plan's Prioritizing Sustainability goal to build economic resilience, expand the local economy's ability to withstand and adjust to disruptions and changes at the regional, national, and global scales. The proposed Conditional District Office zoning district as condition permits uses that are complementary to those in the surrounding area. Can answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any additional comments? Without objection, then we will close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion, please.
Commissioner, follow. Item Z dash twenty-three dash eleven dash zero one one, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at twenty-five oh five Fairview Street from CD dash C dash M, Conditional District Commercial Medium, to CD dash O, Conditional District Office, to be consistent with the adopted GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public's interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map, the proposed CDO dash CD dash zero zoning district permits uses that fit the contents of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approvals in the public's interest.
Second, Catherine Maggott.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson and Ms. Maggott. Any further comment?
I only wanted to commend the applicant on the summary of communication. It was really nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. We'll take a vote on the motion. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Keans?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within ten days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Thank you. We will now revert to our usual agenda, and the commission has decided to move one of the items forward on the agenda, and that is item Z twenty-three eleven zero twelve, a rezoning request from R three residential, single-family three to PUD, Planned Unit Development, and consideration of the Associated Unified Development Plan for the property identified as four thousand West Friendly Avenue, generally described as north of West Friendly Avenue and east of Kemp Road East, four point four acres. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, thank you, Chair O'Connor. We thought we'd give Mr. Carter a break. He's been up here a little bit, so. The subject, again, request this evening is a rezoning request from R three residential, single-family to PUD, Planned Unit Development. North of the request is currently zoned a combination of R three and R five residential, single-family. East of the request is zoned R five residential, single-family, and south and west of the request is zoned R three residential, single-family. The subject property currently contains single-family dwellings. Northeast, south, and west of the request also contain single-family dwellings. This is an image that shows the western portion of the subject property as it's seen from West Friendly Avenue. This shows the middle portion of the subject property, also seen from West Friendly Avenue, and this is the eastern portion of the subject property, again, as seen from West Friendly Avenue. This is the image of a single-family dwelling located north of the request on Tallwood Drive, zoned R three. This is an example of the single-family dwellings located north of the request on Chiswell Court, zoned R five. This is an example of the single-family dwellings that are located east of the request on Bruton Place, zoned R five. These are some of the single-family dwellings located south of the request on West Friendly Avenue, zoned R three. This is a single-family dwelling located west of the request, zoned R three. This is the view facing east on West Friendly Avenue. The subject property here is on your left. This is a view facing west on West Friendly Avenue. The subject property here is located on your right. There are a number of conditions that were submitted by the applicant, and they were advertised as part of this request. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes the Comprehensive Plan's
In recommending approval of this request, staff notes the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map currently designates the property as urban central, and the Future Land Use Map designates this property as residential. Staff has concluded that the rezoning request does support the Comprehensive Plans, filling in our framework goal to arrange land uses for a vibrant and livable Greensboro and the Creating Great Places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed PUD zoning district as condition allows new residential uses appropriately placed along a major thoroughfare incompatible with adjacent existing residential uses and does include conditions to limit potential negative impacts on surrounding properties. Again, staff is recommending approval of the request. They can answer any questions.
Do we have questions? Mr. Kirkman, I do have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
For clarification. One is, could you please explain to us, I think there was an adjustment because of a typo, not because of any change, about the buffer planting yard?
Yeah, that's in Condition 6, right? Yeah.
That was a, there was a landscaping section in the staff report which stated that there would be a 25-foot Type B planting yard along adjacent properties. Our ordinance only requires a 15-foot Type C planting yard from multifamily to single-family dwellings. So the Unified Development Plan represented the 15-foot. The staff report erroneously stated 25 feet. We just wanted to make that clear that, that they would be recognizing the 15-foot buffer.
Thank you. So it was simply, this is just for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
So we were confused. I do have a few other questions if other commissioners do not. We received a great deal of communication on this, so I just wanted to clarify some general questions that I had after reading a lot of comments.
Yeah.
One of them is the limitations of a PUD. I think a lot of people identify PUD with large developments like we have at Adams Farm or at Reedy Fork, but more recently I have seen in some of our rezoning requests PUDs in smaller areas. Is there any guidance?
So the Planning Unit Development zoning tool has been around for a couple of decades, and originally when it was developed, it was developed for larger developments, like you mentioned, Reedy Fork or Adams Farm, some of those kind of things. However, our ordinance, both with the Unified Development Ordinance and now the current ordinance, also set in provisions to be able to use this tool as an infill development tool. Under the Unified Development Ordinance, there was a planned development infill that was focused just on infill types of development, and that was rolled into several other PUD districts with the current land development ordinance into one PUD zoning district. So there's no minimum size or maximum size for a Planning Unit Development District in our current ordinance. You have to meet the other requirements that get to open space and ensuring compatibility on the edges with setbacks when it's up against a single-family residential, as a couple of examples.
I also saw quite a few comments about spot zoning, and I don't believe this is considered spot zoning. Could you clarify that?
I'm going to actually probably put that one over to our attorney to address that.
Chair O'Connor, you know, I would say that ultimately the question of whether or not it is spot zoning is ancillary to really what matters, because spot zoning is not inherently illegal, okay? There is a law of cases, or, excuse me, a string of case law that raises a number of factors that would come into play in considering whether spot zoning would be legal or not. In more recent years, that's actually turned into what is effectively our reasonableness statement, right? What we read from, it's actually from General Statute 160D 605. So that statement of reasonableness is really what matters. Those factors matter regardless, right? That is, that is the inquiry that's, that's really before us, is this rezoning reasonable?
Thank you. Sorry, but I have a lot of questions. I have two others. One is about stormwater. Is that something that we as a zoning commission consider, or does that go under?
Right, so that's kind of hinted to earlier with Mr. Peterson's questions. That's an item that's addressed as part of the site plan review process by the Technical Review Committee, and that Technical Review Committee is all of the different departments that deal with development review. So stormwater will be addressed as part of the review from water resources, and they have certain factors that they'll look at. Again, the general rule of thumb is that once a development is built, it would not generate additional stormwater beyond what may have existed prior to development. That's the standard they try to work towards, and in many cases, they actually improve the situation.
Thank you. And I have one other question. That is, if you could just explain about how setback is calculated. There was a lot of discussion about setbacks.
Well, there's two different things that are in play. So here we have a Planning Unit Development where the dimensional standards are actually established as part of the zoning district and as part of the Unified Development Plan. There's been some separate questions about the average setback, which would be something that was applied if more than 50% of a block face is developed and you're bringing in new development, but that's kind of the, I guess, the standard development throughout the ordinance. Here, the Planning Unit Development customizes the dimensional requirements, so we would go to the Unified Development Plan for those setback standards.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. Do any other commissioners have questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Maggott?
The, the mention of this bio-retention pond would fall under the stormwater concern?
Yes, right. Again, that would be addressed as part of the site plan review process.
So that's not one of our concerns?
Right. Those site developments stand, those site development aspects are not really the purview of the commission. Those are going to be addressed by the technical staff if, if the zoning is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Peterson, could you please use your microphone?
Yeah, it's, the microphone's not doing all right.
Type B buffer yards with an average width of 25 feet, a minimum width of 20 feet. Is that from the residents behind?
Yeah, so that was what Mr. Carter was speaking to, that that was an actual, it was a typo. So between multifamily, which is what townhomes would be, for instance, and single-family, you do a Type C buffer yard on there. Type B is typically going to be used between commercial uses and resident and single-family residential. So that's just an error, unfortunately, in the staff report. The conditions in the Unified Development Plan are correct. It just was something that we made a mistake on, unfortunately.
Does that answer your?
One more question. The development on this parcel of land, I, I see that it's only one entrance and exit onto this property, or would it be two?
That is ultimately going to be determined as part of the site plan review process, because we will have to look at those questions and ensure that there's safe access to and from the site. But that's really a kind of a technical matter as far as that goes. I know there's a conceptual site plan that's part of that, but again, that's illustrative in nature. There's not going to, that won't say this is exactly how it's actually going to be developed. That'll have to be addressed as part of the site plan.
It's a T-shaped intersection. One entrance comes back, you're going, you're going to have to go right unless you redirect, you know, traffic.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The side buffers on the PUD, what would that be?
Again, those are outlined in the Unified Development Plan.
So is that 15 feet?
Yeah, I believe that's what it said on there. Because that, again, that's customized by this particular zoning district, and that's reflected. I guess the easiest way to think of it is we have standard zoning districts throughout the ordinance, so these R3, R5s we mentioned earlier, they all have dimensional standards standard with that district. The Planning Unit Development allows you to customize that.
The Unified Development Plan actually designates a 20-foot perimeter setback along the sides, and then along the northwest of the property, a 30-foot perimeter setback along what is zoned R3, and then what is zoned R5 to the, to the north is a 20-foot perimeter setback.
Would that be in consideration with the other properties that got larger buffer zones, or?
That's a, that is a, it's not a buffer, it's an actual setback. So it's from the property line to the nearest structure.
Okay.
And that is a minimum.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions? Okay, we don't have, thank you for indulging us. Then we'll proceed to the public hearing. If you would come forward, it's a shared 10 minutes for the applicant, and if you would identify yourself with your name and address before you speak at the podium, please.
Good evening. My name is Bo Rodenbo. My address is 230 North Elm Street, Suite 2000. I appear here tonight as the authorized agent for and on behalf of the applicant, CZS Development Corporate, Development Company and LLC. And I have with me tonight, because I'm technologically challenged, my associate, my associate Jamie Loudermilk, who, those of you who attended the, the neighborhood meeting last Monday night had an opportunity to, to see as well. CZS Development Company is a family-owned LLC. It's comprised of the direct and collateral descendants of Chico and Zamira Sabah, hence the acronym CZS. The Sabahs acquired three adjoining acre-and-a-half lots along West Friendly Avenue beginning in the 1970s, on which there were three separate single-story homes located. After the Sabahs died, their descendants formed CZS and have recombined the three lots into a single lot comprising 4.40 acres. The homes have now been demolished in preparation for redevelopment of the property. That has been done with great care so as to preserve the existing trees and shrubbery around the houses as, as well as on the site. The first slide that we've got here is the sketch plan rendering for the, for the property. As Mr. Kirkman said, there are a number of conditions imposed on this rezoning by the applicant, and these have been the product of discussion with the council for the, the opponents. And I wouldn't say that, that we've agreed on all of these, but we have discussed all of these at some length. And, and we have also twice amended our conditions after discussion with the planning staff to make sure that these were concise and clear and easily enforceable by the, by the zoning authorities. You will see that the first condition that we've, we've agreed to on this conditional use, PUD rezoning, is that there would be no more than 22 townhome dwellings, attached townhome dwellings on separately planted tax lots in a planned unit development that would be subject to a declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions providing for the maintenance by the homeowners association of not only the private street and the common elements in the, in the, in the development, but also of the exterior maintenance and, and landscaping in the yards for each of the townhome lots. The other condition in this was mentioned in the questions that were asked of Mr. Kirkman, there is vehicular access solely to West Friendly Avenue. So all of the, the homes have driveways and two-car garages that empty into the private street on the property, which is in a circular pattern there, as you see, and comes out to a sole point of access onto West Friendly Avenue, which at this point is a T-intersection. As Commissioner Peterson pointed out, that this, this section of Friendly Avenue has a, has a median, and so this is a right-in, right-out-only access point for the development. This is, this is a sketch plan of the development showing 22 lots. The, the, this is an eclectic mix of, of townhome styles, some single-family, excuse me, some single-story, some story-and-a-half, and some two-story, but the zoning conditions require that we have no more than two stories on any of these homes and no more than 35 feet in total height. This is the Unified Development Plan that has been amended in response to comments from the TRC. And again, this shows in response to the questions from Mr. Peterson and Commissioner O'Connor, that, that we have 20-foot side setbacks to the east, the north, and the west of the property with the adjoining owners, with the one exception that at the northwest corner of the property, there's a 30-foot setback, because that portion of the property adjoins the, the rear of a property that is owned R3. On the, on the north and east sides of the property generally, that is, that is the village at Windsor Park, which is, has a zoning density of R5, so that those, those lots are only a 20-foot setback from the adjoining property line. There again is an illustration of the proposed access point into Friendly Avenue, and as Mr. Kirkman said, that is subject to further site planning following the rezoning. The retention device that is shown there, stormwater device that is shown there again is illustrative, could be relocated in the course of site planning and so forth. This is an aerial overlay with the Hutchison Court development located in the, in the square in the, in the left-hand corner of the, of the aerial overlay. The property to the east and north is the village at Windsor Park, which, as I said, is a, is a R5-zoned townhome development. And you will notice several things here. There is a, in this, in this aerial overlay, there is a central courtyard that we're trying to preserve in the center of the, of the property that will be open space, and we hope perhaps to relocate the bio-retention cell or the stormwater devices to that area in order to preserve more trees along Friendly Avenue from the location that's shown on the Unified Development Plan. There are, are also trees along the, the boundaries of the property that we hope to preserve with this plan, and to supplement in the Type C planting yard, more dense plantings of both evergreen trees and shrubs, as well as native grasses and that sort of thing, to buffer this property from the adjoining properties. Again, the village at, at Windsor Park is shown just to the east and the north of that property, with Bruton Place coming down the east side of the property and Chiswell Court coming in across the north of the property. At the neighborhood meeting last Monday night, I quoted this passage from the Brookington Institute report in 2019, that many single-family neighborhoods could easily yield more housing and more affordable housing if land use rules allowed gentle increases in density, such as townhomes, two-to-four-family homes, and small scale apartment or condominium buildings. We believe that this, this development is just such a gentle increase in zoning, going from the current R3 zoning to the next highest zoning density, which is R5, and that zoning density is commensurate with the, the zoning density for the adjoining village at Windsor Park. We believe that the setbacks are commensurate with, with that Windsor Park property from the side setbacks, and we believe that the setbacks from Friendly Avenue are also suitable for this property and will enhance the value of the properties adjoining on either side of, and to the rear of Hutchison Court, and will at the same time allow for a, a very gentle increase in zoning density in this property that is, is going to be consistent with the Comprehensive 2040 Plan and land use plan that will provide very eclectic and tastefully designed homes that will center on a central courtyard and will, will in fact enhance the value of the adjoining properties, not deteriorate, excuse me, detract from the, the value of the adjoining properties, but will in fact increase the values and, and be... but will in fact increase the values and be commensurate with providing affordable housing and more accessible housing in this would have been otherwise a single-family residential neighborhood at a very gentle increase in density.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You have three seconds left. Are there any questions from commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Peterson?
Yes, Commissioner Peterson. I visited Tallwood Drive and I went into the backyard of a residence at 4001 Tallwood Drive, the Epstein's. And I don't get the warm and fuzzy of a two-story townhouse overlooking my back deck. Now, the reason I asked early on, Mr. Kirkman, about buffers, and I somewhat measured off what the buffer would be. One level may be fine, but two-story will overlook directly in the property beside the Epstein's. So the Epstein's would be north of this property, in the far north corner, and the property directly behind them looks like, I think, townhomes eight through nine or eight through 10 would directly overlook anyone who is sitting on their back deck. Now, one of the things we consider when we approve these things, that second item question or statement, we say permitted uses that fit the context of surrounding area. Now, I'm trying to get how does this fit the context of properties on Tallwood Drive and surrounding that specific area? Two-story townhouse.
Okay. If you're talking about Tallwood Drive, Commissioner Peterson, that is in the subdivision to the northwest corner there. There are no townhomes situated in that northwest corner of the property. And there's a 30-foot buffer there as well, unlike...
Do you have diagrams?
Yes. That'll be the clearest. Okay. So Tallwood Drive is coming off a street to the north of Windsor, excuse me, Hutchison Court, and that, the property that you were at is in that far northwest corner, just to the east of the north slash on the sketch plan?
So it will be between eight and nine?
Yes, it will be between eight and nine. So there is no townhome located in that northwest corner.
So if there's a townhome, it'll be on nine, right?
That's correct.
And also in the backyard as well. I didn't get those...
Just wanted to remind the commission that this is illustrative at this point. Obviously, this still has to go through site plan review. So this is not necessarily the final version of this development, but just to keep that in mind as you ask questions.
Just as to how it is compatible with the adjoining neighborhoods, Mr. Peterson, I would say that this is, this plan calls for a mix of single-story, story-and-a-half, and two-story homes, and we believe that the surrounding neighborhoods are also a mix of single-story, story-and-a-half, and two-story homes as well. They are admittedly single-family homes, but they are, there are certainly a number of two-story homes in the surrounding neighborhoods.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Those who are speaking in opposition have a total of 10 minutes. If you would line up so you can get to the podium and introduce yourself with your name and address as you speak. And again, a reminder that it's a combined 10 minutes.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Steve Freyaldenhoven. I live at 4003 West Friendly Avenue. I'm a principal architect and LS3P associates, and I've practiced architecture in Greensboro for the past 30 years. I've been asked to speak on behalf of our neighborhood association. The applicant's three combined single-family lots entitled him to build 13 new homes with the current zoning, but he is requesting to impose on the neighbors almost double this in density to 22 units for purely financial reasons. Insertion of a 4.4-acre planned unit development in this section of West Friendly disrupts the density of the surrounding neighborhood and is completely out of context with the existing R3 zoning that blankets the area. Pud zoning of this type should be used where it makes more sense, at the fringe areas surrounding activity centers like Friendly Center and Quaker Village. It is in those locations that a denser residential development can be better integrated into the surrounding community and truly promote becoming car optional by reducing the pressure to have multiple cars per household. Friendly Avenue is one of Greensboro's oldest streets, and it has played a significant role in connecting the city with some of its most unique and distinctive neighborhoods like Hamilton Lakes, Hamilton Forest, and Starmount Forest. The planning department's vision and the city's investment in West Friendly sidewalks, median plantings between Holden and Westridge Road have helped preserve the unique characteristics not found in any other part of West Friendly Avenue. The 97-foot average setback of homes along this stretch of West Friendly has allowed for growth of an established tree canopy and significant amounts of undisturbed land that is an important part of why West Friendly was established as one of the city's visual corridor overlay districts. The proposed density of 22 units with double garages will require extensive site grading with little opportunity for the applicant's desired statement to save the canopy trees. Minimum building setbacks located in the conditions are not sufficient to provide rear and side yard transitions or satisfactory transitions to the existing scale and density of the adjacent homes. This type of development will require a significant portion of the site to be dedicated to the stormwater control feature, and its proposed location along Friendly Avenue is completely out of character with the neighborhood's streetscape, and if permitted, will decrease surrounding property values. Let us look at the possibilities of this site and understand its history and context for greater potential. Let us support collaboration through relationships with meaningful purpose and not assume that it is just another project with cost-benefit rewards for a single developer. We request your vote to deny the rezoning for this proposed planned unit development and to encourage the applicant to understand this property as part of a unique neighborhood and develop a design that more accurately reflects its surrounding context.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nikki Kohut. I live in Old Starmount Forest at 3921 West Friendly Avenue with my husband, three boys, and our dog. I've lived in Greensboro my entire life. I have admired the beautiful homes and gracious lots along Friendly Avenue since I was a child, and I'm grateful I'm able to raise my family in one of them. All of the qualities that make the area unique were well-thought-out in the 1920s. Alfred Scales sought to create a unified community with Hamilton Lakes. The Sternberger family later developed the property and insisted on modest home sizes, large lots, curving streets, streams, and mature trees along Friendly Avenue. This rezoning request by CZS Development will no doubt change the character of our neighborhood, something the city has vowed to protect in its Greensboro 2040 plan. The City's Big Ideas Plan states that it seeks to protect and enhance the unique character of every neighborhood, leverage planning and permitting tools to safeguard the environment and historic buildings and places from the potential negative impacts of development and redevelopment. Glenn Drew of CZS Development has shown over the past six months, he seeks to only profit from the demolition of his deceased family's property. We have asked, but Mr. Drew has repeatedly refused to decrease the density of his proposed twin homes to be consistent with the current R3 zoning that is paramount to the neighborhood's character. Mr. Drew's proposed plan for rezoning would inevitably require a complete raising of the 4.4 acres of his lot for the 22 townhomes, eliminating even more of Friendly Avenue's beloved tree-lined streets. If Mr. Drew has any concern for the area, he would redesign his plans by decreasing the density or develop in a more suitable location. I'm asking the zoning commissioners to vote no on rezoning this property. A no vote will still allow Mr. Drew to build up to 13 single-family homes. This will lessen his impact on our neighborhood, green space, and wildlife. Tonight's decision will forever shape the future of Friendly Avenue, setting precedent for developers to demolish single-family properties in our neighborhoods. How do you aim to preserve our historic neighborhoods and homes? The Big Ideas Plan states clearly that Greensboro's historic places are treasured, protected, and contribute to the city's unique identity. Preserving this part of Friendly Avenue is a priority for our neighborhood and the community at large. The zoning commission should not disregard and disrespect the will of thousands by siding with a single company trying to cash in on it. Please vote no. Thank you.
We would, in observance of the time limits we have, if you need to express yourself, would appreciate a single clap, no more, so that we can proceed. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Eric Easton. My wife and I live at 4103 West Friendly, approximately 500 feet west of the property Mr. Drew acquired from his family. This site is now a single parcel, and the rezoning will only enrich the developer at the expense of the surrounding property owners. I have served the city of Greensboro as a firefighter for the past 10 years. The last six of those years have been at Station 49 on West Friendly. I know this territory better than anybody here. Not just every street, cross-street, hydrant location, four-way stop, stoplight, and park location, I know the styles of homes, roof types, setbacks, and building materials used for these homes. Let me be perfectly clear, we are not against development. However, what Mr. Drew is proposing changes the entire look and feel of our low-density, single-family-home neighborhood and sets a precedent of allowing more dense and inconsistent development into one of the largest and most established areas of stable R3 zoning in the city. The proposed rezoning of this four-acre property for planned unit development would be the only high-density townhome complex on the two-mile stretch from Holden to Mears Chapel. This complex is completely inconsistent in several ways when compared with the rest of the unique single-family homes in the neighborhood. Property owners along West Friendly Avenue have submitted an application for a neighborhood conservation overlay. The planning department determined eligibility and has begun the planning process. It is imperative to set the precedent for this type of rezoning. The neighborhood collected over 1,000 signatures in a petition against CZS's original application for rezoning. Both neighborhood meetings that CZS held were attended by hundreds of residents, and there was zero support for the proposed development. Furthermore, a survey was sent out by the neighborhood with over 250 responses that listed the items most important to the conditions of the development. A majority of those recommendations were not included in any of the developers' proposed design and rezoning presentations. The 2040 plan encourages to protect and enhance the unique character of every neighborhood from the potential negative impacts of development and redevelopment. The proposed complex increases the degree of nonconformity, and it does not fit into any of the surrounding neighborhood's framework. Reasonable resolutions that still allow Mr. Drew economic return would be to develop compatible single-family homes with a density comparable to Roundtree Court. Even with less acreage than Mr. Drew's property, Roundtree Court has nine detached, unique, single-family homes that host all of the characteristics of our neighborhood. The density of the village at Windsor Park has been mentioned numerous times by CZS's attorneys. While the zoning of the neighborhood is R5, the average lot size is one-third of an acre, which is consistent with the surrounding zoning. Worth noting, this is not located on Friendly, nor is there even access from Friendly. While it is within the existing zoning, it is still smaller than most of the lots in the area. This type of density fits in with the suggested gentle density as defined by the Brookings Institute. Mr. Drew's proposed complex is completely inconsistent with our neighborhood. You have the power to set the precedent. Please vote to deny this request for rezoning. I would like to add that the walks of all life, he wants $3,000 for rent. That is not walks of all life. To show you where our neighborhood stands on this issue, will everyone against Mr. Drew's proposal please stand up?
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. We will have five minutes of rebuttal time for each side. So the applicant has up to five minutes of rebuttal time. And when you're ready, if you'd identify yourself again for the record. Thank you.
All right. We're just getting our technology geared up here. Thank you, Commissioner O'Connor. Okay, with respect to the compatibility with the adjoining...
Could you identify yourself again? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I am Bo Rodenbo, 230 North Elm Street, Suite 2000.
Thank you.
And here for the applicant. With respect to the compatibility with the adjoining village at Windsor Park, put up on this slide here the excerpt from the original map for the village at Windsor Park, and I want to point out with respect to the setbacks from Friendly Avenue that the neighbors are now proposing of 100-foot setback, that the village at Windsor Park, when it was planted in 1986, shows a 65-foot minimum building setback from Friendly Avenue, and that is the standard to which the four homes along the end of Bruton Place have been built, and those back up to Friendly Avenue. So there's also just down the way in the Benfield subdivision at the corner of Holden Road and Friendly Avenue, those homes that back up to Friendly Avenue are only 70 feet back from Friendly Avenue. So the precedent has already been set for homes on Friendly Avenue that are considerably less than 100 feet back from the right-of-way of Friendly Avenue. With respect to the traffic on Friendly Avenue and this subdivision turning out into Friendly Avenue, I would point out that as cited in the staff report, the transportation classification for West Friendly Avenue is now a major thoroughfare with vehicle counts of upwards of 17,500 vehicles per day. The incremental increase in traffic on Friendly Avenue resulting from this development is so small that no TIS was required under the city's traffic impact study ordinance and that no trip generation report was required by the staff for this development. Even if you figure there were two cars per townhome, and they made two trips in, each of those made two trips in and out each day at peak hours and so forth, that would be an addition of 88 trips on Friendly Avenue. So we don't believe there is any negative impact on Friendly Avenue from this development. And as a matter of fact, it may actually have a... And as a matter of fact, it may actually have a traffic calming impact, because right now you've got four successive hidden driveways with the three Saba lots, and then the Mr. Bunge's house just to the west of the Saba's lots, all of which are shielded by dense vegetation on either side. And so, right now, with traffic coming around the corner at Seven Oaks Drive, and it's got a long straight stretch down to Kemp Road West before they hit a stoplight, and we believe that actually the traffic coming out of this subdivision and the entrance statement for the subdivision will actually slow traffic down. And finally, I'd just like to say that if this site is not a candidate under the 2040 Growth Plan for a gentle increase in density from R3 to R5, then I can't imagine the site in Greensboro that would be such a site.
I'm sorry, Mr. Roden. Did you say you're requesting R5? Because that's not what I'm seeing on here.
The zoning density that we are requesting is 22 units on 4.40 acres, and so that is effectively a zoning density of R5.
You cannot do townhome or twinhome on an R5 zoning.
Well, that's the reason we have asked for a PUD rezoning application.
Okay. No, no, I just want to make sure, because R5 is a single-family designation.
Correct.
Okay.
But I'm talking about the zoning density. This is an R5 zoning density that is
It's a five-unit-per-acre density.
Right.
You cannot say R5.
Okay.
R5 is a single thing. I mean, I will argue this point with you, because
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to argue
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I do have one question for you. As I walk the property, I noticed that there was a chain-link fence on the property. Is that owned by CZS, or is that owned by the other property owners?
And we don't know the answer to that question, Commissioner Engel. It runs along the, our survey shows that it runs along the property line, and in some places it's located on the adjoining property owner's line, side of the line, and in some cases it's on the side of the Saba's.
So, we don't know what's going to happen to that fence, other than the fact that it probably is going to stay there? Is that what you're saying, or?
Well, if it's left to us, we will likely take, if it's on our property, we will likely take the fence down and replace it with its plantings.
Okay.
Thank you. You still have a minute and 14 seconds if you have any further comments.
All right. The last thing I'd like to say is that this is a thoughtfully designed zoning request that does meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan as stated by the staff on filling in our framework and creating great spaces and great places. And it does increase the accessibility of lower, slightly higher, gently increased density for the people of Greensboro. So, it both addresses the need for additional housing and more accessible housing in Greensboro, and we have made significant concessions to the neighbors in these conditions that we've cited. And for example, the statement was made that we had not made any concessions to the neighbors with respect to the density. We did, in fact. Our original request was for a CDRM8 zoning district, and as a result of our initial meeting with the neighbors and my subsequent conversations with the neighbor's attorney on successive occasions, we reduced that density from 28 units down to 22 units.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, then we have up to five minutes for the opposition in rebuttal time. And again, if you'd introduce yourself when you come to the microphone, please.
So, thank you for indulging us here, commissioners.
If you'd introduce yourself, please.
Sure. My name is Marsh Kraus, and I've been hired by about a dozen of the neighbors who are here tonight to provide them with legal representation in connection with this rezoning. I live at 516 Woodlon Avenue here in Greensboro. In addition to this zoning map we're trying to bring up on the Elmo device here, I actually feel bad, there's about, I understand it, about 150 people out in the lobby, and I was hoping that I could find a way to make you appreciate that, because this is, this really is a historic turnout for a rezoning like this. I'm hard-pressed, I've been doing this for 25 years, I'm hard-pressed to ever remember this figure of turnout. And folks had to wait in line and go through a metal detector, and particularly the ones on the lobby, you can't even tell there are 150 people out there. But I have a photo, and I don't suppose that it's going to work to put that up on here either right now. So, if anyone doubts it, though, just take a walk out there. So, I'm going to hit on a couple of things, but
I think we heard them.
I think that was the low-tech solution. So, it's been said already, but this 4.4-acre tract had three homes on it, and the rezoning applicant is entitled as a right to add 10 more. They could have 13 homes. But because they wanted to double that roughly to twice that many, that's why 400 people had to come out here tonight to fight, to try to protect the stability of their neighborhood. And again, I recognize everyone who's out here, you're to be commended for your willingness to do that. This is not easy. Oh, there have been references to Windsor Park. I'm sorry, this is distracting. I appreciate what you're doing there. So, there have been references to Windsor Park, and it's, the proponents of this rezoning are using it as a justification, because they're desperate for something that they can hang on to to justify this increase in density. The thing is, it does have an R5 label, but if you look at the lot sizes, you look at the plat map, how it was platted, there are 41 parcels there. So, first of all, it's only 41, and it's in a sea of R3 zoning. You have 41 R5 parcels in a sea of R3 zoning. And that's why the zoning map is so instructive. When you look at it, you see it's just this tiny little spot right here that's R5. And they're trying to leverage that and say, well, there's a precedent that's been set. Really, not much of a precedent, but it's even less of a precedent when you consider that the average size of those lots, each of the, there's 41, and I'll show you the math, I'll hand that out to you before I'm done. Each one of the, the average lot size of those 41 parcels, ah, I don't know if that's better after all that. But the lot size, the average lot size of those 41 parcels is .27756 acres each, meaning that that existing density there is actually closer to R3 than it is to R5. So, you've got 41 houses with an R5 label, and they're trying to make it sound like a precedent has been set that will affect the fate of hundreds of existing R3 lots. I understand that your job is to follow the comprehensive plan, and it's not really being used completely, though. The staff report mentions filling in our framework and the desire for diverse housing. I think someone already mentioned that these are going to be $3,000 a month rentals, at least that's what the developers are saying. But look what's been left out of the recommendation. Goal B under "Filling in our Framework" was left out, which says Greensboro attracts world-class development to transform underutilized sites and buildings into valued assets that complement their surroundings. Complement their surroundings. Those are important words here tonight, folks. And then the second big idea, and we'll talk about big ideas, but the second big idea is creating great places, and you've heard that mentioned in connection with a lot of the rezonings tonight. But what hasn't been mentioned is Goal A, Strategy 1, under "Creating Great Places," which is to protect and enhance the unique character of every neighborhood, to leverage planning and permitting tools to safeguard the environment and historic buildings and places from the potential negative impacts of development. So, why wasn't that mentioned in the staff report? I think we know why, because it's completely inconsistent with staff's recommendation that you approve this rezoning. Also, no mention of Goal B, Strategy 1, under that big idea, which is to continue to identify and promote the historic fabric of the city. Why wasn't that mentioned? Again, obviously, it's inconsistent with the staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
Did I get my full five minutes, or was it being eaten up with the?
No, no, we waited.
Okay. In summary, we would ask you to deny the request of rezoning tonight, and I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. One clap. One. Some of you can't count. Thank you. Do we have any questions? All right, then, we are ready for any, since we have no questions, we can close the public hearing without objection. Do we have any comments from the commissioners?
I'm going to go first. This is my home turf. I currently live in Wedgewood. At one point in time, I lived in Hamilton Lakes. I have a business in Guilford College. I'm up and down Friendly Avenue multiple times a day. My feeling is, over the years, and what I visualize, is this is inconsistent with what Friendly Avenue is. I pulled the zoning maps and looked from Green Valley all the way out to Mears Chapel. There's only three PUDs that have been zoned in that area, and all three of them are at Friendly Shopping Center. That's the point of a PUD. It was designed to be an area where you work, shop, and live. That is not what we've got here at this request. It is totally
We would appreciate it if you would refrain.
It's totally inconsistent with the whole area that stretches from, basically, Hobbs Road all the way out to Mears Chapel. It's a single-family residential. And I agree with Mr. Kraus, the R5 in Windsor Park, and I will tell you, I was peripherally involved in some of that when it was designated, and we didn't have a cluster home designation in 1986. So, it was a matter of, how can we design this, and it fit into, we were trying to fit a square peg in a round hole. So, R5 worked, but they are single-family detached, which, and they're not visible from Friendly Avenue. A lot of these points have been made. This is an inconsistent request for this location, and I cannot support it.
Thank you, Ms. Skeens. Do we have another comment? Mr. Engel?
Yeah, I'll simply say that I will concur with Commissioner Skeens tonight. To me, this is not close enough to an activity center, and that's what I would have liked to have seen for the increase in density that we're looking for here. I'm also, I'm not comfortable with the buffers. The, recently, I planted three-foot evergreen, you know, in my yard, and I know that's going to take five years to grow, five to seven. And all those five to seven years, there's going to be headlights going in people's homes. I'm just not comfortable with that. With, having walked the property and looked at it, I just don't, I'm not comfortable with the density here. So, I'll be concurring with Commissioner Skeens.
Ms. Commissioner Maggot?
Yes.
I'd just like to add that I think that the outreach directly to the residents by the applicant's lawyer has been very diminished. As a commission, we always are concerned about outreach and have there been a one-on-one conversation with, talking about a concern. We have often certain conditions added so to take care of the residents that live around the surrounding areas, and I don't feel comfortable that that has occurred, so I will be voting against this.
Mr. Downing?
Yes, there's three quick things I want to share. I'm going to vote no, of course. But in this particular regard, I'm going to share why. The strategy in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, it says, of course, to protect and enhance the unique character of every neighborhood. This doesn't mean that down the line, the neighborhood dynamics will not change, will change, or the sentiments or ideals, but this, and I also want to say the second point, this is not affordable housing. We cannot conflate those definitions. This is not affordable housing, so that is off the table. Number three, it is reasonable to say that the Friendly Avenue area and the surrounding community is robust, it's a robust community, steering the planning and development growth in various other ways throughout this community. So, with that being said, I'm very much convinced, because of those who are showing up today, but also those who are in the vestibule area, but also, we receive hundreds of emails from you all, and communication, I mean, all of us, and it's not just that, but you've proven your case, and the literature, the information, and looking at the comprehensive plan, so therefore, I intend to vote no on tonight.
Any other comments? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, Madam Chair. I too would be voting no on this. I think it, when I look at development coming into the kind of a middle of another neighborhood, I think this is a, don't meet the criteria. I think it's, it's not a positive development for the neighborhood, and we can see about a support here, so this time I cannot support. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also comment, not to belabor, but I do think that we are in a growth spurt in Greensboro. I'm not totally adverse to adjusting zoning in different neighborhoods so that we can do infill and not continue to sprawl, which I think is a goal of the 2040 Plan. However, the density of this particular project and the fact that some of the units will be forward of houses that are long-established on Friendly Avenue is especially offensive to me in the way that it would be set. And while the plan that is proposed is just a characterization, it's not necessarily the final plan, I think that there are some shortfalls in it enough to say that I cannot support it. I do think that we need to be mindful of growth, and we need to find ways to adjust. We're talking about accessory dwelling units in various traditional neighborhoods, we're looking at new ways of approaching living, but I just don't think this meets the goal for me, so I will be opposed. I would also like to add, as Chair, we appreciate whatever your comments or interests are, we would appreciate having no outburst after we take a vote, because this is business for us, and it's not a performance. So, I'm sure you understand, and we appreciate that. We appreciate very much the neighborhood involvement and the outreach and the concern. It's been very clear that the neighbors have a sentiment and have pride in where they live and what they do, and I'm very appreciative of the fact that we've had this response. So, I thank everyone for that. I don't know if there are any other comments. If not, we'll be looking for a motion first on zoning and then one on the UDP.
I'd be willing to do that. So, in regards to Agenda Item Z-23-11-012, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that it is action to recommend denial of the rezoning requests for the properties at 4,000, 4,004, and 4,006. thousand six, West Friendly Avenue, from R three residential, single-family three, to P U D planned unit development, to be inconsistent with the adopted G S O 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reason. One, the request is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed P U D zoning district, even as conditioned, does not limit negative impacts on adjacent properties, nor does it permit uses that fit the context of the surrounding area. Three, the request is not reasonable. Due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area, it will be a detriment to the neighbor neighbors and surrounding community, and denial is in the public interest.
Commissioner Peace, in one second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Peterson. Any further comments? Not, we'll take a vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggot?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
No.
Zoning denials, do we need to vote on the U D P considering this vote?
We were just discussing that, and it it tracks with the plan, so if this gets appealed to City Council, an action on the Unified Development Plan, which is basically saying it's inappropriate, it's been reviewed and is, if approved, would be appropriate to go with this. So I think we do need to have a separate vote.
I would encourage it, yes.
We do?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, then, do we have comments on the U D P? Ms. Skeens?
All right, council's going to have to enlighten me. We have denied the use and the request. The the U D P, by virtue of denial of the request, does not come into play. And and you can't approve a U D P if you've you've denied the the use for it.
If council's agreeable, let's just amend the motion to deny and say incorporating inclusive of the Unified Development Plan, and that way it's one motion.
Oh, hold on, I mean.
That would mean we're denying the both.
Correct. That is what that is what the motion is in that case. That's what I'm just asking.
So so basically, I'm just saying, as part of my motion, I'm also.
Right.
Well, we've we've already voted.
Well, you're amending the motion.
Yeah, so you're just amending the previous denial to incorporate.
No matter what, we're going to take another vote on this. Can we just?
Yes.
Can we just say?
Sure.
I would I would move that we deny the U D P?
Yes.
And let's just do it that way.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Second, Catherine Maggot? Okay, so we are taking a vote on whether or not to deny the U D P, and a motion's been made to deny it, so an affirmative vote would deny. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggot?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. Zoning denials constitute final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. All zoning appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December nineteenth, 2023 City Council meeting. Thank you. We will take a break and reassemble in about 10 or 12 minutes. Greensboro, you're going to enjoy delicious Middle Eastern food. But you might not know from the name is that you'll be treated like family.
So our father started Jerusalem Market, the grocery store, the deli, in 1989. And frankly, as soon as I could reach the counter, I was helping Dad, just doing what I could, whether it be running the register or just stocking shelves. But, you know, we always observed him cooking because my dad loves to cook and my mom loved to cook, too. So growing up, we were always around a lot of the food and exposed to the recipes. And we weren't necessarily, like, right there helping, but you got to watch and see what goes in everything, and you learn by, you know, osmosis, you learn by just picking it up. So that was always, you know, it wasn't really asked of us, but we wanted to help in the store, and it really got us going and really just, that's what got us started, with the love of the food and the love of the the food, like, the culture through the food. Growing up, you know, meals were important. We always ate together as a family. Always made it a point on Sundays to, because my dad works nights, a lot of times, running the original store, working night and day. So a lot of times, during the week, we'd just be eating with Mom and eating with Dad and always on Sunday. It was like you had to be there for Sunday dinner. But it was mealtime always meant just basically sharing your day and sharing some, you know, some food. We made it a point to sit at the table. And and, you know, young, when you're younger, you don't always appreciate that, but it's really awesome, and I'm glad that we were kind of forced in a good way to do that. But, yeah, we always, cooking was always important in our family. A lot of us, you know, a lot of my family likes to cook and would always bring food over. A lot of times, we had aunts and uncles that lived close proximity. If they made a dish that they had extra, they'd always bring some to share. And that's always like part of the the community, too, just sharing the food and sharing, you know, which if you got it, you share it, and that's that's what's cool. So just working with our dad all those years, you know, we always had a limited kind of menu at the the deli there, and it was something we wanted to expand on because there's so many recipes, like the one I shared with you earlier, called mashi, kusama shi, which means stuffed squash. It's, you know, yellow squash, like a spring squash hollowed out and stuffed with a meat and rice, like ground lamb and beef mixed with just basically white long-grain rice, cooked with spices, and you stuff the squash in there. And you can cook it in like a light tomato sauce or even a yogurt sauce. And you just eat it like that, get a few squash on your plate with the sauce, and you get the, that way you get the sauce when you cut it open on the rice. You could even, you know, you could even, if the season is right, have really small grapevine leaves that you blanch really quick and then put that same meat and rice mixture into and roll them. And that was a really special thing because you didn't have those all the time. And that was something like, almost never made it to the table because everyone would end up munching them as the other food is being ready, like the the stuffed grape leaves are sitting there, and everyone just, you know, kind of squirreling them away. So, yeah, that's a, that's that's my personal, like, favorite thing growing up, and still really to this day, actually. Another favorite dish growing up, it was something very special called emsakken. It's an Arabic, it's a Palestinian roasted whole chicken, or even use Cornish gamehen if you want to be really fancy. But it's served with a a highly reduced mixture of sumac. Sumac is a lemony, tangy, purple-colored spice. Sumac and onions sauteed down so the onions are super caramelized and, you know, nice and creamy. So you take some fresh pita bread, or my dad's oldest sister would make a very special bread that she cooked on rocks, like stones, so it would have an awesome crater-y texture. And she makes a nice big loaf of that fresh bread. And then after you roast the chicken, you put the sumac onions on top of the bread and the chicken on top of that, and then finish in the oven for five, 10 more minutes. And it comes out and it's served family-style, so it's intended, everyone just kind of, you know, back home, you eat with your hands, and this is definitely one of those dishes. It's best served that way, where you just, everyone just kind of tears into it, you dip the, you know, you tear the chicken off, you dip the chicken into the onions, and you get the bread and just eat bites of it like that. It's really, it's really intensely flavored and just awesome, just clean, crisp flavors. And it's something that always reminds me because my aunt's bread is super special, and it's good with the pita bread, but that was always taking it to another level, you know? So, yeah, when people enjoy the food and really appreciate where it comes from and, you know, my grandmother recipes, you're eating the same thing like we used to eat. It really opens, you know, it really touches our heart because it's really, that's, that's kind of the deepest, especially in our culture, it's the, it's the most genuine way to show gratitude, is to feed somebody and to share something that you prepared for yourself with them. And the the fact that our guests can appreciate that on the same level is really awesome. It feels like we're almost feeding you in our house and our home, and that's one thing we really, we really like to focus on here, is keeping that personal touch and being able to interact with our our guests and really see how much they appreciate and enjoy it because it really, it makes it rewarding to really, to bust your butt and work hard here to, if people appreciate it on that level.
When it's women's professional basketball, and Greensboro is home to a women's professional basketball team, The Chaos. Chitrina Smalls is the founder, owner, and head coach of the Greensboro Chaos. All right, tell me your story. I know you played ball as a little girl, like, lots of sports, though, right?
Yes, yes, I played a lot of sports. I started playing basketball around 10, and I just fell in love with the sport and knew it was something that had to be a part of my life for the rest of my life.
So you played ball in college, but then you got hurt?
Yes, I had a shoulder injury. And because of the shoulder injury, that kind of messed up my playing career. And around 22 years old, I picked up coaching.
Yeah, so, and actually, you said a coach actually saw the coaching ability in you before you had any idea that would be your path?
Yes, my head coach, Rodney Copeland, rest in peace, he used to tell me, you see the game much differently than regular basketball players, and you're going to be a much better coach one day than you are a basketball player. So he's seen something in me before I even knew it existed.
Fast forward, you're here in Greensboro, working for the city, and some friends say, you know, you should think about bringing professional women's basketball to Greensboro. And you thought?
You all are crazy. How am I going to start it? Because I don't have any money, right? But they they persisted and they continually asked me, and I seen that they wanted it, and I knew that I can, I can do it. So I I took a leap of faith and started a team.
You started in 2019, and how did you do that?
So I had to establish a name and work up a logo. And then Amber Cook, who's one of our players and captains, she's from Greensboro, so she has a lot of connection with different women players. And she began to reach out to different people. I began to reach out to other resources.
2019, you got the team together, you got all this funding, you started, and then you couldn't even play a single game because of the pandemic.
It was a big surprise, but it it gave us the opportunity to integrate ourselves into the community. It gave us a opportunity to give back with the Twain Coach Drive, donations to the I R C, and just really get our footing before we jumped out there and had our first season.
You did get to have a first season a year later and actually get on the court. What was the community response to seeing the team and and these and these athletes, these these female athletes?
The community response was much greater than what I thought. I I thought maybe we'll have, like, 10 fans in the stands. But people showed up. We had season pass holders our first year out, never even seen seen the ladies play, but we had people who just, like, supported us of a blind faith, and we had a great turnout our first season. And ever since then, some of the fan base has followed us since then for the last three seasons, and it's it's much bigger than what I've ever would have thought that we would have.
Explain what it means to have a women's professional sports team in Greensboro, this size city.
It's beyond what I could imagine, or even worse that I can think of, just because I never thought I would be in this position. So it's much greater than my wildest dream, right? And then to do it in a city that I'm not necessarily from, I'm I'm from New York and New Jersey, and to be able to come down here and fall in love with the city of Greensboro and say, this is where I want to plant roots, and this is where The Chaos is going to plant roots at, it's it's much bigger than what I ever would have thought.
This is really bigger than basketball for you?
It is. Our staying with the team is more than basketball. So we have a charitable branch called Chaos Cares. It's about giving back, making sure that our players have a home. It's about making sure the young ladies who come to the games and watch us play know that they can do it. Internship opportunities, coaching opportunities, opportunities behind the scenes. We we like to just give back.
Young fans, little girls who are watching the team, what what do you want them to get out of this?
I want them to get that anything is possible. I tell my players, on the court, you could be as fierce as you want to be, because that's going to translate to your life, right? So I I feel like what we do on the court translates to the office and into our families. Like, because one day, as a woman, right, we're going to have to negotiate a salary, and we're not going to be able to just hold back on that, right? Because we're women, we know what that feels like. So I want them to take the same passion into their workspace, into their homes, into their families, and do what they do best, right? Don't like, don't stifle your voice here on the court, don't stifle your voice in real life. I want the young ladies to see that you could be fierce, you still could be a lady, you could still play ball, you still could be tough, tumble, it, all of those things. I want them to walk away feeling like ladies come in all different shapes, sizes, and attitudes, right? And and walk in it, be confident in it.
All right, you might normally see her on the court. This is Analza Jordan, tweet, as you probably know, our shooting guard. Hello?
How are you today?
So good. Okay, what made you come to The Chaos? What what interested you in it?
Just hearing so much about how she loves, like, women empowerment and just wanting to give things back to the community, especially when it comes to younger females. So after getting invited out, I did my own research on the, you know, history of the team and just what her passion is about, and it kind of touched me and what I'm about as well. And I got invited to try out. I just seen it as a great opportunity, and I'm so grateful that I made the team and just proud I put on for my city.
What do you like about this team?
The energy is so, it's so loving, you know, everybody's just welcoming. And of course, the wins, you know, we're all pretty great. It's just a really great family. I just came into this family not too long ago, but they embraced me with such great arms. It feels amazing.
And it's got to be fun.
It is definitely fun, and great, it's a great time.
And seeing the fans and and the little girls, we keep talking about these other girls who are who are looking at you as role models. What's that like?
It's great. When we were growing up, there wasn't too many, you know, it was a lot of older guys that helped us get there. But now that we're older and we see younger girls more and more wanting to play basketball, it really warms my heart, you know, and the fact that I'm able to be there and help them on that journey, it just means so much more.
Danny White is a shooting guard for The Chaos. What brought you to The Chaos?
Honestly, my coach, she found me in the midst of playing at this league at Barber Park, and I honestly didn't even know about The Chaos until she came up and she approached me, asking if I played. And I was just like, okay, sure. So she asked me to come out for tryouts. I wasn't able to make it, unfortunately, due to being out of town. And then she reached out to me via social media, asking if I was still interested. And when I got the message, I was like, yeah, like, I'm down.
Did you think you would have an opportunity to play professional basketball?
I honestly did not. I had offers to play in college, but I didn't take them due to, you know, they just didn't have the major I wanted at the schools. So after that, I was just like, well, you know, maybe it's over for me. And so my coach found me, she was like, wow, like, God's still working mysteriously.
So what is it like to be on the court with these strong, professional women who are at the top of their game?
I love it, like, every bit of it. I love the environment. I love being around women who are trying to better you while they're bettering themselves. Like, I feel like that's, that's what makes sports better, like, when you're around people who are passionate about what they're doing, and then they're trying to push you to be a better version of yourself, too, so.
What's your dream?
My dream, honestly, is just to be a successful black woman. Like, whether I'm doing something I love, whether I'm helping people, it's just to be successful all around.
Are you doing what you love right now?
Yes, I am. Like, I love playing basketball, I model on the side, and I love both of them, so.
Want to find out more? Try out for the team or go to a game? Go to greensborocaos.com. There's a new way to get around downtown Greensboro. The hopper trolley is rolling on the streets. Glenn, what is the history of trolleys or street cars in Greensboro?
So the earliest street car we know about, Rosemary, was in 1892, when the first horse-drawn or or mule-drawn street cars were operating around small routes up and down South Elm Street.
Okay, but then, in the 1900s, that changed.
Yeah, it expanded around, starting in 1902, they actually installed electrical lines, right? So these are street cars that are operating with overhead power. So these are streetcars that are operating with overhead power. And they grew out from downtown and started expanding out to the, to the suburbs, Lindley Park, out Summit Avenue, out all the way to the Mill, the Mill villages in, in White Oak in proximity.
So it was really how people were getting around?
Yeah, it was really trying to expand this idea of what was Greensboro, right? I mean, we're a very centralized city with this kind of strong spine that runs along South Elm Street. But there were entrepreneurs like Jay Van Lindley, who was like bringing people out further out west to Lindley Park. And they actually, one of my favorite things is they built an amusement park out of the original Lindley Park. There was a draw, that was the, the streetcar was accompanied, ran the amusement park to bring people out, set Spring Garden Street all the way to where they had a lake and a casino and ballroom dancing and all sorts of wonderful things that went on in Lindley Park.
So why did they go away?
Why did they go away? That's a good question. I think in some ways that they were a victim of their own success, right? Because they stretched out Greensboro into these neighborhoods and, you know, miles from the core of downtown and people were able to build houses. And then automobile culture, right, comes along. We've got great streets and it supposedly took about two and a half hours to ride the streetcar from Lindley Park to downtown.
Wow.
Yeah, you could almost walk as fast, right? So it was, you know, at that point, when people were able to have more and more of their own cars, shopping centers are growing up and Summit Avenue and other places, I think the demand was, was really decreased. But originally, in the early 1900s, you know, we, we read in numbers that show remarkable numbers of ridership.
And really, that's what we're hoping is going to happen now. So they're back as of 2023 in downtown Greensboro. And the idea is to see fewer cars in downtown and more trolleys and more people walking.
I think it's great and it reconnects people with history too, right? Because it's a way that people can really easily and without any cost to themselves and conveniently, because these things are coming right every five, seven minutes, to be able to go up and down and learn about the history of Greensboro as well as see fantastic places like the Greensboro History Museum or the International Civil Rights Center and Museum, Blandwood, the Children's Museum, all these great attractions.
The parks.
The restaurants, all this wonderful stuff is in downtown Greensboro.
Yeah, you work in downtown Greensboro at the History Museum, of course. So how do you see yourself using it?
I'm certainly going to hop on when I need to get down to South Elm Street, you know, if I'm going to go for a bite down there or it's just a really hot day, it's, you know, it can be a, a lot of fun just riding around and going up to, you know, if I need to get to the, to the Hoppers game right at the end of the day on a, on a Thursday, right? I can leave my car in the, at work and, and just ride right over there to the stadium.
And let's talk about the name really quickly, The Hopper. We, you know, most people think, oh, that must be after the Greensburg Grasshoppers because that's our baseball team, but it actually has a deeper history and meaning in Greensboro.
Yeah, the Grasshopper was, was a particular kind of cannon that the Continental Army used at the Battle of Gilbert Courthouse in 1781. So as a lot of people know, it was a battle that the American forces lost, but General Greene's forces did enough damage to Cornwallis that he was limping around by the end. And by the time he got to Yorktown, George Washington was ready to take care of him. And it was really the end of, a culmination of the end of the American Revolution.
I always learned that it was where we lost the battle but won the war.
That's what I hear too. So and our friends at, at the National Military Park out there at Gilbert Courthouse can show you all that fantastic stuff too.
All right, so Haley, why did you jump on the Hopper?
I was walking down the street and I saw the QR code for the trolley and I thought, why not just try to ride the trolley? And I've never been to this city, so I decided it was a good way to kind of take a lap around.
You're from where?
Tampa, Florida.
And what brings you here?
I'm a flight attendant, I'm on a layover.
So what's it like being the very first passenger on the new Hopper Trolley?
It's awesome. The city's great, everyone's so welcoming and it's fun.
Well, welcome to Greensboro. We hope you come back and tell, tell your passengers.
I will, I'll let them know, thank you.
Want to hop on? Look for these signs around Elm Street in downtown Greensboro. There are about 14 stops between Fisher Avenue and just south of Gate City Boulevard. The Hopper Trolley operates Thursdays through Sunday. You can pick it up about every seven minutes. And hey, the best part about it, it's totally free. Find out more about it by going to greensboro-nc.gov and search Trolley.
Do we have our, too virtual?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. We will commence again with our meeting. We appreciated the break. The next item on our agenda is a rezoning request from RM 18, Residential Multifamily 18 and PUD, Planned Unit Development, to PUD, Planned Unit Development with the required Unified Development Plan for the properties identified as 1606 Cobb Street and 520 South Josephine Boyd Street, generally described as north of Cobb Street and west of South Josephine Boyd Street, 1.858 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property. And I want to take a second to clarify, as I did last month, this, this isn't a business item, but this is two parcels. One of the parcels is already zoned Planned Unit Development. The, the other parcel is an RM 18 zoning district. So this request is to bring the current RM 18 lot into the Planned Unit Development. So when you look at the, the conditions that are presented, there will be a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. Phase 1 is what is existing on the, the currently zoned PUD zoning district, that, on that property. Phase 2 is what is proposed to be incorporated into that development. So with that, this is the zoning of the, of the subject property, which contains approximately 1.85 acres and is located north of Cobb Street and west of South Josephine Boyd Street. This is a rezoning request from RM 18 and Planned Unit Development to Planned Unit Development. North, south, and west of the request are zoned RM 18 and east of the request is zoned public and institutional. This is the aerial map of the subject property showing that the, the portion of the subject property that is already zoned PUD contains multifamily and commercial units on the property. The portion of the property that is, is currently RM 18 contains a single-family dwelling. North, south, and west of the request contain single-family dwellings and east of the request, which is across Josephine, South Josephine Boyd Street, is UNCG's campus. This is an image of the southeastern portion of the subject property as seen from South Josephine Boyd Street. This image shows the southwestern portion of the subject property as seen from Cobb And this image shows the single-family dwelling that's located on the western portion of the subject property as seen from Cobb Street. And this image shows single-family dwellings that are located north of the request on Morton Street, zoned RM 18. This is a single-family dwelling north of the request on South Josephine Boyd Street, zoned RM 18. This image shows a portion of the UNCG campus that is located east of the request, zoned This image shows single-family dwellings located south of the request on Cobb Street, zoned RM 18. And this image shows single-family dwellings that are located west of the request on Mayflower Drive, zoned RM 18. This view is facing south on South Josephine Boyd Street, the subject property is on the right. And this is facing north on South Josephine Boyd Street, the subject property is on the left. This is facing west on Cobb Street, the subject property is on the right. And this is facing east on Cobb Street, the subject property is on the left. These are the conditions that have been proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as urban central on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's creating great places by idea to meet housing needs and desires with a sufficient and diverse supply of housing products, prices, and locations. The request also supports the filling in our framework big idea regarding how we arrange our land uses for where we live, work, and attend school and how we shop, enjoy our free time, and enjoy our free time to create more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed PUD zoning designation as conditioned would allow higher density residential uses in immediate proximity to a university and other mixed-use development. The non-residential component of the proposed PUD includes conditions that limit potential negative impacts on the surrounding area. The zoning also encourages appropriate scaled development close to a major thoroughfare and maintains good transitions between existing residential development and commercial uses. And I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions from commissioners? No questions. We'll open the public hearing. If you'd come forward, the applicant has up to 10 minutes. If you would identify yourself with your name and address, please.
My name's Todd Dorner, 3203 West Market Street, Greensboro. I'm the owner of the apartment complex. And what we're asking for, well, first of all, College Park Place has been there for almost 20 years. I built the first building, built the second building, bought the lot behind it with the expectation of, you know, adding on the third building. We're not asking for more density, we're actually asking for less density than what the RMA team would allow. We're asking for 24 one-bedroom units, which is in high demand for the university, right across the street from UNCG. We're locally managed and owned, and we have been for all those 20 years. We've been a good neighbor, I think. We keep a quiet environment. We haven't had any major problems, no issues. I met with the Mayflower Neighborhood Association last Sunday and we received some positive feedback after we discussed more with them what the plan was and is to be. We went back and forth with their suggestions and we said that it would be no more than 24 one-bedroom units, which is in the PUD, and no commercial, no commercial at all. And they asked if I would check with the city on the closing of Cobb Street entrance and opening other South Josephine Boulevard entrance, but that was denied by the city traffic. So I tried to do that for them, but didn't get, didn't get anywhere with that. I have agreed to put a fence, hasn't been agreed upon what the composition's going to be, but all around the property in the back where the houses are. And we're right in the middle of RM 18, right across the street from the university. So it's very conducive to what we want, this three-story building with 24 one-bedroom units, right behind the other two buildings. Let's see. No commercial. And I've, I've written a letter to the Mayflower Neighborhood Association agreeing to the wood fence, or fence that's going to be put up for the neighbors. And we discussed, again, the Cobb Street entrance, no more than 24 units, and no commercial. I believe that's it, other than we've been great neighbors and we can, you know, look forward to, you know, being a good neighbor for a long time.
I have a couple.
Mr. Egbert? Yeah, Egbert, I'm sorry, Mr. Angle. Long evening.
No, no, you're good. A couple of questions. You said something about a fence, but I'm not seeing that in the conditions.
Yeah, it's a letter that, we discussed that at the meeting last Sunday with the Neighborhood Association. And it's something that I have agreed upon and put in writing in a letter to the Neighborhood Association, so that would have to be added to the PUD.
So is it your desire to add a condition then to the request? Is that what you're saying? Or, okay. Do we have? Okay. So let me see if I can figure this out real quick. So you're basically saying that you would like to establish a fence along the western property boundary, western and northern. All right, bear with me here for one minute so we can figure this.
Certainly.
Well, I hate to do this, but we probably need to take a quick two-minute break so we can see if we can figure.
Well, I've got some other questions. So y'all can work on these other things.
We'll ask questions.
Yeah. So you had a neighborhood meeting? And, and how many people were there? Where did you have it?
We had it at the College Park Baptist Church.
Okay.
Sunday at four o'clock, last Sunday at four o'clock, not yesterday, but the week before. And I think two, maybe six people showed up from the Neighborhood Association.
Okay. And that's where this conversation came out? So with regards to what you're rezoning, and this is, you know, the PUD, PUD, PUD is a little confusing. The, the piece of land that you're actually adding, how big is it?
0.67 acres.
So at RM 18, 0.67 acres?
11 units.
Would be 11 units. So you are asking?
We could build forty-four.
For a little bit of an increase.
We could build 11 four-bedroom, four-bath, which would be 44 one-bedroom, 44 bedrooms.
Okay.
We're asking for less density, but we want to include it with the existing complex and only have 24 one-bedrooms.
Is that where the, is the, is the total parcel size 1.8 acres or?
I think the total is 1.85 and the parcel that we're discussing is 0.67.
Okay. But I, okay, I'm, I'm good. Mary, if you've got something, go for it.
Ms. Gaines?
That, that, just wanted to confirm Phase 1, Phase 2?
Yeah.
And, and try to come up with our total number here.
1.85 total and 0.67 for the 1606 Cobb.
Yes, 1.858 is for both Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Combined.
Combined, yes.
Point, well, that, 0.67 is Cobb Street, 1606 Cobb Street.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? We'll give staff a moment to figure out the fencing issue.
Will there be any additional parking on this new portion?
Yeah, designated parking.
It's not included here, anything about that.
I think it's in the.
Is that a condition that you need to add?
I think it's in the PUD.
Well, we have a UDP. Well, it's a PUD, so we need a UDP.
Have, have you done an amended Unified Development Plan to incorporate this additional 0.67 acres?
It is. Never mind. I didn't flip enough pages. My answer, question's been answered. I'm, I'm still flipping. Okay, it's stuck. I, I got it.
I see the inclusion of the 12 bicycle racks, but, which was in the first portion?
Did you get a, do you have a diagram of it?
They did.
Is there a diagram like this with parking? Can we put this up there? Do you have it?
That's the UDP.
That's not the one that this one has the-
Doesn't have parking.
We don't have that. Can you put it right there?
Put it on the overhead.
There we go.
So you can see the existing buildings are, I'm not sure where you're looking at. On my side, it's on the right, where you have South Josephine Boulevard and UNCG, and then the 1606 Cobb Street, where it says proposed building, will have parking on both sides. And we hope to move the dumpster, as requested by Mayflower Neighborhood Association, to the forward parking lot, once it's approved by sanitation department. But that's the parking all around the building. You're welcome.
All right. I think we have come up with the language, as I understand it, on the fencing, so I'm going to read this, and then the applicant can respond if this is correct. So what I think works is that for Phase Two, and that's the part that's currently zoned RM 18, a new Condition Four would be added that states, "A minimum seven-foot-tall opaque fence shall be installed along the western and northern property line." Does that sound correct? Is that what you're asking the commission to add?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what the applicant's asking.
Sorry? He said a minimum of seven.
Well, in the fence section for residential uses, seven is as high as you can go. Yes. So that's why I had to clarify that seven foot.
So could you just repeat it one more time, just so we have it?
"Minimum seven-foot-tall opaque fence shall be installed along the western and northern property line."
So if he wants to have an eight-foot fence, he's got to get a variance. Is that correct?
Correct.
And this is in addition to the plantings. We've talked with the two of the people that live, Joe and his wife, and planting hollybushes that'll grow tall and be a noise barrier as well. So I'm trying to work with the neighborhood as best I can, and I love plants, I love trees, more the better.
So do we need to take a vote on adding the condition that the owner's proposing?
It seems like that's what the applicant is proposing to add to the request. So yes, the commission needs to take a vote.
So I would, and this doesn't have-
No, he's, yeah, you can't, he has to offer.
I will make a motion to accept the applicant's condition, as stated by Mr. Kirkman, of a minimum seven-foot fence, opaque, located along the-
Western and northern property line.
Side of Phase Two of the PUD development. Is that encapsulated? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Take a vote on that. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Skeens?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Egbert? Ms. Glass? Thank you. Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so that condition has been added to Phase Two, as proposed by the applicant. Did you have further comments?
That's it, for me.
Do we have any more questions from commissioners? I have one question. I know that in your first phase, you had at one point some commercial.
Yeah, we no longer have the commercial, and we don't intend to have it go back there or in the new phase, what do we call it, Phase Two?
Yeah, you mentioned that you would not, it would be all residential.
No commercial whatsoever.
Thank you. You have seven minutes and 18 seconds remaining, if anyone else wants to speak in favor of the application.
I think we're good.
We'll offer you some rebuttal time later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we have up to 10 minutes for anyone who wants to speak in opposition. If you'd come to the podium and identify yourself, please, with your name and address.
My name is Eve Hubbard. I live at 510 Mayflower Drive. I am president of the Mayflower Area Neighborhood Association, which was formed when their first building was built. We were formed to oppose their first upzoning request and held them to the RM 18 development for their first project. I don't know where I was when the second building went up. I think my husband was in the hospital, because I would have been in here opposing that one, We have continued to work since then as a neighborhood to maintain and protect the net quality of our neighborhood. Except for the developers, two existing buildings, our area is made up of single-family homes and duplexes. People have acted with comments and various things through the years. I've been living there for 33 years. If my DNA holds up like it promises from my grandparents, I'm probably going to be living there 30 years from now. So it really matters. During these years that we've been working on this, we've had an uptick of owner occupancy. Raising the density erodes our property value and our quality of life. No developer has offered me any money that would make me move in a more, make me able to move into a more stable neighborhood. When they do, I'd gladly do it. Not so far. We're worried about setting a precedent for future requests of upgrade, upzoning. This project, unlike the other two buildings, does come right up next to residential property. If they took a floor off of this project, they'd still be above the RM 18 designation, but I don't think there would be anyone in the neighborhood opposing it. One of our other concerns, and I'm not sure that you were the right people to present this to, but I wanted to, didn't want to miss an opportunity. When their first building was designed, the water resources rules were different than they are now. And they allowed water to be evacuated onto an adjacent property, which resulted into the woman's driveway being flooded. Her whole yard is flooded. And in the winter, when it's raining, her driveway is essentially a skating rink. It has never been fixed. If the PUD would make it so that we had a guarantee that that was going to be fixed, that would also take away one of our neighborhood's objections to this project. I know that the new water flow regulations have changed in the intervening years, and that that would not, properties aren't allowed to dump water on another property any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. We have seven minutes and 13 seconds remaining.
Hi, my name is Michael Walker, and I live at 709 Mayflower Drive. And when I hear the group before us that spoke, and they were talking about R3 and R5, I salivate, because I don't know why we're even RM 18, but we are. But our neighborhood is very similar to the ones around us, Lindley Park, Sunset Hills, College Park, and all of those are indeed R5s and R3s. My house sits on a third-acre lot, as do the two beside me, one way and one, we're all single-family. There are some duplexes in there, and, but we all sit on larger lots, and it's just a quiet neighborhood. And as Eve stated, we are increasing our number of owner occupants there. So I'm a little worried about setting a precedent, too, as we move into the neighborhood with an even higher than RM 18 to a PUD now. And I will speak to, though, the fact that Todd and David did come to the meeting, and they addressed a lot of our concerns. And one of the reasons I'm opposing is because those concerns, should this pass, I want this to be codified, and the fence was one thing. And I know that we've just addressed that, and it was added to the thing. He did speak a little bit to the driveway. That was one of the things. There's a driveway now onto Josephine Boyd, as well as there's a driveway entrance/exit onto Cobb Street. And I really wasn't asking that we add another driveway, because Josephine Boyd is busy enough. I was just, if the project could be laid out in such a way that they encourage entrance and exits to be from Josephine Boyd as opposed to Cobb Street, because Cobb Street is definitely coming right into the neighborhood. And I don't know how that could be done, but you make one more attractive, more whatever, and you downplay the other one. I would think sanitation would probably want that side entrance open, maybe even emergency vehicles would want that open, to have egresses and ways in. So, but, so anyway, if that could be done, only one person asked, well, actually two people, I think Todd asked the city and Eve, and they said no, but I don't think it was made very clear what we wanted with that entrance/exit thing. So if nothing else, I would like a motion to continue, just to kind of pursue that a little more, then maybe that could be codified into the PUD. But other than that, like I said, I appreciate them hearing us out at the meeting, and I appreciate you hearing us here as well. So, but we have one more speaker, I think.
Hi, my name's Katie Collier. I live at 1613 Morton Street, which is behind, to the north of the proposed development. I just have a few things. I want to recognize that though only a few people have been able to come to the neighborhood meetings and to this meeting, that we have had a lot of emails and communication within the group. I also-
It's good we found a chair. We can't hear.
Okay. All right. Can you hear me now? Okay. My name is Katie Collier. I live at 1613 Morton Street, which is adjacent to the property to the north fence line. I just want to acknowledge that other people have emailed and been part of these discussions, though they haven't been able to be at the Mayflower Association neighborhood meetings. And I also just want to raise up that this neighborhood is not just college students, that we have owner-occupied people, we have daycare adjacent to Art House that college students drop their kids off at, and we have a young autistic kid that lives across the street from us with his grandma. We have people that live in the church parking lot. We have a lot of various people that live there, and one of my concerns right now is just the traffic. It's already, college students drive pretty fast around there, so I do think that with the very small streets, Morton Street is a one-way street, I just anticipate a lot of traffic going there, so that's one of my concerns. I wrote a letter opposing this, and then I spoke with the developers at the meeting, and it seems like we are kind of in a tough spot, because either way, they're going to develop, and it's just like, how many things are they going to develop? How many units? And I think the thing that would help us a lot is if it was the smallest number that they would be willing to do, and I would prefer if it was two stories rather than three, because I think putting a three-story building into the block versus on Josephine Boyd, all of the other kind of different houses or different developments are on Josephine Boyd, not in the neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Could staff clarify for us about the exit and entrance on Josephine Boyd versus Cobb?
What is the question, though? I mean, what do you mean to clarify?
Well, I believe the applicant said that they had asked for-
They did, well, they had submitted that that was something they were discussing with the neighborhood, but GDOT was not in favor of adding it. Then the way we received it was removing the driveway on Cobb and adding one on Josephine Boyd, and that was not something we were supportive of, for a myriad of reasons, but mainly, there's a brand-new pedestrian crossing right there, and adding another driver up beside of it, and it might have to be pushed too, then too close to the intersection with Cobb to get far enough away from that crosswalk, as well as various other side issues they have.
Were other issues, other potential options discussed, like a right-in, right-out on Cobb, or, you know, emergency-only entrance?
Putting in a right-in, right-out on Cobb would require widening of Cobb.
Right-in, right-out from the, from the development.
Right. That would require widening Cobb to accomplish that, by putting a median down the middle, and there's no room for that.
Is there no way of joining the existing, I mean, you've got Josephine, but you also have an entrance on Cobb that exists now?
That's, they're, the illustrative site plan they showed connected all of it internally, and there were no new access points. What they're trying to use exists.
So can they use the existing-
Yes.
Entrance and exit that they have? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, there's still two minutes and four seconds remaining, if anyone else wants to speak in opposition. Seeing none, then we have some rebuttal time, so the applicant has up to five minutes for additional comments.
You need my name again? Yeah.
If you just state your name again, please.
Todd Dorner. And let's see. We are right across the street from UNCG. Everything around us is zoned RM 18. You go on the other side of Mayflower, and you have University Village. It's conducive to exactly what we want to build here, and it's less density than what can be built there. After the meeting, Eve sent me several emails that were positive from people who didn't show up for the meeting, but got the letters and the information from Eve. And if you look at the deeds of the properties all around, the majority of the houses, and we can go back and forth, agree to disagree, are rentals. They say their numbers are increasing. I don't know where they're getting the numbers, and I'm not here to argue that, but I'm just saying, we are right across the street from UNCG, and to the best of my knowledge, they are mostly rentals. The water issue, the drainage, it's governed by the city. City ordinances, they, I mean, I don't have any control over what the city requests of my builder to do with the water drainage. So that will be handled appropriately by the city. If we were to not get the PUD approved and keep the existing RM 18, we would have to keep the existing Cobb Street entrance. Right now, we're asking, we'll close that entrance off where the house is, and only have the one Cobb Street entrance and the one South Josephine Boulevard. So we're reducing one entrance by approving of the PUD. And that's, that's my rebuttal.
Thank you.
Any questions? Anything?
Are there any questions? Don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? We have another three minutes and 11 seconds, if anyone else cares to speak in favor. This is in favor? Okay. If there are none, then we will have up to five minutes rebuttal time in opposition.
Thank you. Yes, Todd has, Eve Hubbard.
Say your name again.
Eve Hubbard.
Thank you.
Todd Dorner has indeed been very accessible, and we've talked a good bit about these things. The rental property is also of value as a single-family residence. Most of, far from being a student neighborhood, most of our residents on Mayflower, Cobb, and Morton are not students. In addition, we have working families, we have children living on the street, we have retired people. My husband and I have been living there for 30 years and haven't been students in quite some time. It is a very diverse neighborhood, and the rental property is attractive as it is, and the people who own it have protected very jealously their value many times. And with UNCG coming in and talked about the years of income that they can make from their rental properties as it is. I have people coming, students as well as other people, talk to me rather frequently. I walk my dogs every day. People talking to me about how they find this area, this little street so attractive, and they would like to come live there. They're looking for a place on our street to live, because it's like it is. So Mr. Dorner's project is definitely not as horrible as it could be, but I am very- But I am very concerned about the precedent. I don't want it to, I don't want the zoning commission to get the idea that our neighborhood is up for grabs. We're serious about where we live and want to keep it as much like it is as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd give your name again, please.
All right. Michael Walker, again. And as Eve said, yes, they've been very cooperative and all that. And one that we're against, rock and a hard place here, because yes, if he does develop that in isolation, he would be required to basically treat it as an independent parcel, and therefore add another entrance-exit onto Cobb Street without any access to the existing Phase One, which does now have an entrance-exit onto Josephine Boyd, giving maybe the possibility some of that exhaust goes away from our neighborhood onto Josephine Boyd. So like I said, we're in a rock and a hard place, so I would step down my objection if I knew that we could just get that traffic not to funnel through our tiny, you saw the slide of Cobb Street, how it was very small. It's one of those roads where you have to wait for the oncoming car to hit a parking, an empty parking spot before you yourself can get through. So anyway, any way that we can minimize the traffic on Cobb, and unfortunately, I think that means approving this, but I would like, if there's any way we could add to the conditions to minimize that, as well as the fence, which I think we've all capitulated on that one, and some of the other things, just to make sure that they're codified into this, I think that would make our opposition back down quite a bit.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We have another minute, 36 seconds, if anyone else cares to speak in opposition. If not, we will close the public hearing. Just so it is clear for the public, the commission itself cannot offer conditions. It is only, has to come from the applicant if there is a condition to be added, which the applicant did with the fencing. And, and it has to meet, staff has to vet it so that we're sure it's in keeping with existing ordinances. That's just as a point of information. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, without objection, we will close the public hearing. I would be looking for two motions, one on zoning and one on the UDP.
I'll make a motion on the UDP first, or the...
Zoning.
Okay. The PUD. Okay. So in regard to Z23-10-001, "The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 1606 Cobb Street and 520 South Josephine Boulevard Street from RM18, residential multifamily 18, and PUD planned unit development to PUD planned unit development to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future build form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed PUD zoning district as condition permits uses that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. And three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest."
Second. Just Commissioner Gilmore's second.
Thank you. Ms. Maggott and Mr. Gilmore. Any other comments? No?
I'll simply say that there's still time for you all to continue having conversations, and I would, I would suggest doing that, perhaps meeting with GDOT as a group and talking through what you can do, because there is another layer after us if you so choose. You know, which Chair O'Connor will read in a minute. One other thing I will say is I know that everything we've, we've talked about tonight is mostly with regards to increasing density. However, there have been times when people have come to us and requested a decrease in density. So if you are a homeowner and you want to come to us and say, I would much rather live on a lot that's R5, or, you know, RM12, whatever, we do that as well. So that's an option for you all that you can talk to staff about at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms... We have a motion and a second. I will take a vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. This approval constitutes final action, well, excuse me, we need to do the UDP also.
I'd like to make a motion to do the UDP, to approve the UDP.
Mrs. Commissioner Engel, I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Maggott and Mr. Engel. Any discussion? I'll take a vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department, and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December 19, 2023 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Thank you. And as Mr. Engel pointed out, conversation can continue, and it sounds like the applicant was willing to entertain conversation and solutions, so we appreciate that very much. The next item on our agenda is PLP 23-24 and Z23-11-008, an annexation and original zoning request from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family III for the property identified as 4012 Hickory Tree Lane, generally described as south of Hickory Tree Lane and west of Youngsmill Road, .61 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, which contains approximately 0.61 acres and is located south of Hickory Tree Lane and west of Youngsmill Road. As Chair O'Connor stated, this is an annexation and original zoning request from County RS40 to City R3. North, east, and west of the request are zoned County RS40. South of the request is zoned County RS40, County CZRS3, or, and County CZRS3. This is the aerial map of the subject property, showing that it's currently vacant or undeveloped. North, south, east, and west of the property contain single-family dwellings. This is the subject property as seen from Hickory Tree Lane. This image shows a single-family dwelling located north of the request, zoned County This image shows another single-family dwelling located north of the request, zoned County This image shows single-family dwellings located east of the request, zoned County And this shows a, this shows a, a single-family dwelling located south of the request, zoned That might be the CZRS3 there. And this may be west of the request, zoned County RS40. And this is facing east on Hickory Tree Lane. The subject property is on the right. And this is facing west on Hickory Tree Lane. The subject property is on the left. In recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the Comprehensive Plan designates the property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's Building Community Connections goal to maintain stable, attractive, and healthy places to live and raise families. The proposed R3 zoning designation is primarily intended to accommodate low-density, single-family detached residential development of up to three units per acre, not per lot, but per acre. The proposed original zoning request also permits uses that are allowed in the surrounding area that are consistent with those uses. I can answer any questions that you have at this time.
Mr. Carter, based on the frontage of this lot, how many houses could be built?
I do not know exactly what that, what that frontage is.
Is it, is it 100 feet?
It looks like you could only get one house on that.
Based on the, that's what I, that's, yeah, I didn't have my 100-foot tape measure with me, but that seemed to be what I thought.
Yes.
And I know that R3 is the lowest zoning designation that we have as the city. We don't have an R1 or an R2.
That's correct.
We only have an R3.
That's correct.
Right? Is this, is this case really boiled down to just somebody needs city water, or is that really what it comes down to?
That's correct. It's in an area that if you, that access to water and sewer comes with being annexed. So water and sewer are there. If you want access, you are required to be annexed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And to further, since Mr. Engel's asking, a very rough calculation, looks like it has about 115 feet of frontage, so you would not have enough lot width to do two single-family lots under R3.
Thank you. All right. The applicant, the applicant has up to 10 minutes, if you'd like to come to the microphone and identify yourself. Is the applicant present or online?
There was one person online with their hand raised that I saw. It's, but it's just a number. Like for that person to clarify if they are the applicant. It's not a name.
I am not the applicant. Hope you can hear me, sorry. 4014 is, I am not the applicant, I'm the next-door neighbor.
Thank you.
But I had a question about the planning for some of the zoning. I did have a question now. That's what I had raised my hand for. For clarification.
We don't have a question-and-answer format, and first, we would like to hear from the applicant if the applicant's present, or anyone on behalf of the applicant or in favor.
Chair O'Connor, the applicant is not online.
Oh, the applicant is online?
Is not, no, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Do we want to continue this, then?
If I, if I may, something that will be responsive to what you said, and I believe perhaps that comment at the same time. If the commission wanted to take a vote on continuing it, certainly could, it's within your purview. Of course, if someone who is here to substantively oppose the matter wanted to speak in opposition of that continuance, they could. They would just need to limit their comment to that while you're, while you're voting on that.
All right. We first need a motion to continue.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody want to make a motion to continue? No one, there's no desire to continue? So if the applicant is not present and there is no one to speak in favor, then we will allow anyone to speak in opposition. I believe, if you'd come to the podium and identify yourself, please.
John Patterson, 141 West Lakefield Drive. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, today I'm here to address a matter of significant concern to the residents of our esteemed Young Acres community by formally opposing the zoning request submitted by Mr. Ronald Benjamin. My decision to make this request is grounded in the thorough consideration of Mr. Benjamin's track record and property development, particularly his actions at the adjoining property at 4010 Hickory Tree Lane, as well as his involvement in the Candace Ridge and Pleasant Hill neighborhood developments.
If I may get the clock stopped real quick, and sir, I apologize for interrupting you, but at the outset of the meeting, I stated that, you know, this is, this deals with land use. We really can't get into questions of who rather than what. So I just want to caution you on the fact that the track you're starting to go down is something that the commission may not be able to take into consideration. It's certainly your time, you use it as you see fit, but I want you to be aware of that.
Duly noted. It has come to our attention that Mr. Benjamin intends to construct a five-bedroom, four-bathroom house on the proposed location. This plan bears a striking resemblance to the developments he's established in the Candace Ridge community, where he purchased two houses side by side and runs a group home there. Such expansions, while potentially profitable for a single business entity, do not align with the residential character and historical significance of our neighborhood. Our community, over 50 years old, is not just a collection of homes, it is a tapestry of history and achievement, having been the home of some of Greensboro's most noted African-American residents. This includes founders of Dudley Products, Joe and Eunice Dudley, Guilford County's first African-American fire chief, Ray Flowers, esteemed Guilford County School Board member, Dr. Sandra Alexander, and the current CEO and part-owner of the Charlotte Hornets, Mr. Fred Whitfield, among others. The introduction of Mr. Benjamin's business enterprises threatens to erode the residential character and historical integrity of our neighborhood. It is our duty to preserve the legacy and communal spirit that has been fostered over decades. As such, we firmly believe that allowing this zoning request would not be in the best interest of our community, nor would it uphold the values and vision we hold for the future of Young Acres. In conclusion, we respectfully request that the commission deny Mr. Benjamin's zoning request in the interest of maintaining the unique heritage and residential nature of our community. Thank you for considering our position.
Did you, did you receive a letter in the mail from anyone other than the city, or an email, or anything outreach-wise from the applicant prior to this meeting tonight?
No. And I, and I did send you all a letter that outlined what has happened in the property that his daughter presently controls. And so it, it becomes a situation where the, the land was purchased for the home next-door to the lot that he's, has now. She is, she has now sold the lot back to him, and he's been operating this enterprise there in the community, across the street from us and the community next door.
Let me, let me, I want to, I want to focus you here. I just want to understand, did, did the applicant make any attempt to speak to you or the other neighbors? And you can raise your hands if you want to, in-person, sign, mail, flyer, nothing? Okay. That's, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd give your name and address, please.
My name is Ernest Allen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'll be brief. I love our neighborhood. I've been there 49 years.
Mr. Allen, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you give your address as well, for the record?
Yes. 3913 Hickory Tree Lane. My wife and I built this house, our house, 49 years ago. I have been the community watch coordinator for over 25 years. And I want to go on record as opposing any construction on the property in question if it's anything beyond a single-family residence. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in opposition? We have seven minutes and one second remaining.
Chair O'Connor, Peratallison is online and would like to speak.
All right. If you'd please identify yourself and put your camera on, would appreciate it.
Um, I actually don't have a camera in my location, so my apologies in advance. This is audio only. Um, if I'd known that ahead of time, I would have tried to make arrangements, but I didn't know you needed a camera. Um, my, 4014 Hickory Tree Lane, right next door, have unique history about...
Excuse me, could you give your name and address, please?
Sorry, it's Peratallison, 4014 Hickory Tree Lane.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm unique in that we are right next door, and even more unique, the 4010 address, location, where his daughter is the landlord, but he is the tenant, or however it's being done now. That house my parents actually built, rebuilt right next door to the first house in the neighborhood. Parents loved it so much, they came back and built next door. I wanted to just address that, what I want to have questions with, I put into planning, I don't know which was my minute, I needed to know because the owner or the person requesting the information did not reach out to the neighborhood, sent out a little note, but never replied to our questions. And one of the things I want clarity on is if he's getting city water and everything's well, where's the digging and connection going to take place? Whose land is being impacted? And the flooding, that, that, and we don't have a copy of the house and how it's going to be built and how it looks and how far back. We don't have any of that information. So, that was going to be part of my question. I didn't know, I didn't want that to be part of my questions. I just wanted, I was hoping to see in the zoning. And also, I noticed in one of the reports, they also had stated to the effect that it wasn't going to be an impact on the police per se. But when I looked at the address, a couple of places, that address zip code was done a few different ways, 27405 and 27407, which makes a difference on where it falls. And also, this said City of Raleigh, but whom we see out there the most is the sheriff. I'm not sure if that's part of your report on who covers what. That, I was just curious, but definitely about where the connection goes through. And then I will also reiterate, that was asked before, this owner of the property, which has already been leveled and flooding, is, has not reached out to the community for this project. So, on that aspect. So, but to the, to the component of the historic aspect of this neighborhood, as in the previous one in which you all had said, I know our neighborhood is not designated as historic, but it is. He also didn't mention, the founder of Doomtink lives on that street, or she passed, is on that street as well. One of the first black firemen, also from Greensboro on that street as well. I know you don't necessarily take in statistics, but I wish you could on the things that have happened for a quiet neighborhood in the five years since this entity has been. I am not against business. I'm not against people with disabilities. I encourage it. But poor management, I do not. And that is what this individual is bringing, is poor management where people have to run when they see their neighbor because someone has gotten out. So, with that information, I was hoping you can, before I go forward, I would like to know if I can get an answer, at least on where the water connection and sewer connection is coming from and whose property is impacted because that wasn't, we don't have any of those plans. I haven't seen them. And I thought possibly presented within his presentation, but he's not here.
Thank you. We have another four minutes remaining if anyone else wants to speak in opposition. Okay. If not, we do have five minutes of rebuttal time available for the applicant, but I don't believe we have anyone here to speak for that. And there's no point in having the five-minute rebuttal for the opposition.
Exactly.
So, without objection, we will close the public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments?
I just want to add, we don't know, do we know for sure if this, I guess it doesn't quite matter, but do we know for sure if it's going to be a group home? Or is that the only underlying reason why the neighborhood feels against this particular?
So, yeah. I mean, the request is to have city R3 zoning, which is a residential, single-family district. There is an opportunity within single-family to do a family care home, which is up to six persons. Would have to be separated by at least half mile from every, any other family care home. And these are typically licensed by the state and monitored by the state. We'd have to obviously go through on our end just to monitor and make sure that was occurring. But it is a single-family zoning district, so the intended use is single-family, a single-family dwelling. And even under state laws, I said earlier in an email, that a family care home is considered a type of a single-family dwelling under state law.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I also stated, the other properties that I think are being mentioned are in the county's jurisdiction, and we do not have any information on those properties. We are trying to get some information, but we don't have it at this point, nor does the city have any ability to enforce anything within that, those properties.
Yeah. I guess where I'm at right now is I, I don't feel comfortable approving this tonight. And, you know, for me, this is, this is typically fairly perfunctory, but, you know, there's been no outreach, there's been no, you know, no outreach to us for that matter. And I honestly don't know beyond the footers and things that are out there what the applicant is trying to do. So, from a land use perspective, I don't, I don't really know what I'm approving, other than a single-family home that, you know, may or may not show up on the land. So...
Just confirmation, we have approved group, doesn't it require special use permit for a group home?
A group care facility is a different, it actually, yes, it would actually not be allowed in a single-family zoning district. That's why I mentioned a family care home is an option as far as a use of property within R3. But a group care facility is a much bigger facility and is not allowed in R3 zoning.
But that is surmise on our part at this point because we don't know.
Right. I mean, you're, you're asking for any uses that are allowed in a single-family zoning is what you're being asked to evaluate.
So, if it's less than six occupants, they do not have to come back to us for any additional...
Right. We would have to evaluate the separation requirement with that. And it's potentially they have to get, you know, if it's too close, they'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment for a special exception. But, no, you would not have, that conversation would not come back to the commission for any action. You're, you're evaluating any use allowed in the R3 zoning district tonight. That's the request before you.
Well, and without the applicant here to ask that specific question, we, we don't know.
Is there a reason why we don't want to do a continuance?
No one made the motion when it was requested.
Can I make a motion? Can I? Oh, is it too late?
Can we still make a motion to continue?
No, we can't.
Can we be reconsidered?
At our last meeting, an applicant didn't show up, and we continued the matter because we wanted to have equal opportunity for both sides to be heard.
To be fair, at the last meeting, the applicant's representative asked for the continuance as well.
Yes.
Who may or may not have been the applicant's representative. And in this case, because people have shown up, because it's nine o'clock, I, I personally will not be voting for a continuance. There is the ability, because this is not, you know, final action, for the applicant to do the, you know, the work and, and at the next level of this without my favorable recommendation. And maybe some of you will make a favorable recommendation, and that's fine. That's, I'm, I'm ready to vote at this point.
Yeah. I'm ready to vote as well. Could I make a motion?
Yes, you can make a motion if, we have two motions, first for annexation and second for zoning.
Okay. So, Chairman O'Connor, Mr. Warshay Downing, I'd like to make a motion in regard to item Z2311008. Okay.
We, we need to annexation first. The question about whether or not to bring it into the city's jurisdiction.
Okay. So, you do the annexation.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes, Mr. Peterson.
PLP23-24, recommend that we deny the annexation of 4012 Hickory Tree Lane.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the annexation. Any further discussion? Take a vote, Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Then we don't need a motion for zoning. Is that correct?
I... No. The, the council's going to have final say.
Yeah, I was going to say, you were making recommendations, so yes, we do need a motion to deny on the zoning as well, if that's your choice.
All right. Chairman O'Connor, I'll make the motion in regard to item Z28, I'm sorry, Z...
Mr. Downing, yes.
Yes, in regard to item Z2311008, in regard to the zoning request. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend denial of the original zoning request for the property at 4012 Hickory Tree Lane with County RS40 residential single-family to city R3 residential single-family 3 to be inconsistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action to be, action taken to be reasonable or unreasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. And these are going to be factors for denying the rezoning request. The request is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan built, future built from form map and future land use map. The proposed city R3 zoning district does not limit negative impacts on the adjacent properties, nor does it permit uses that fit the context of surrounding areas. And the request is not reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area, and it will be a detriment to the neighbors and surrounding community, and a denial is in the public interest.
Second, Catherine Maggott.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Ms. Maggott. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
And Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Because this is the status of a recommendation, it is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December 19th, 2023 City Council Meeting. I'm disappointed because I believe the outcome could have been different had we had some response or some neighborhood communication. But at this point, the applicant still has the option of the public hearing before City Council. We have one item remaining. Item PLP23-25, a street closure request for White Moore Street from its intersection with O'Farrell Street extended westward approximately 891.62 feet to its terminus. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This image shows the street closure request. You'll see, you'll see O'Farrell on the eastern side of, of this, this request, and then the, the paper street, the right-of-way for Whitmore, Whitmore Drive, Street, sorry, Whitmore Street. The applicant's requesting to close the, the right-of-way. And this is also showing, and this is important to call out, also showing that the property within the air, within the right-of-way would be combined with the properties to the north. So, state law says that when it's not split along the center line and goes to, you know, in this case would be properties on the south to the center line, properties to the north to the center line. This exhibit is showing that all the property within the right-of-way would be deeded to the adjoining property owners to the north. So, I just want to call that out. But there is no street there at this, at this time. It is, there was dedicated right-of-way for that. So, this went to the technical review committee. I also want to note that the, the applicants, people who signed the street closure petition, represent 100% of the owners that have road frontage along the street. So, this went to the technical review committee at their November 3rd meeting. They and, and you as well will need to make the same determinations or consider the same items when you are considering the street closure request. Is one, that the closing of the street to vehicular traffic is not contrary to the public interest. And two, that no property owner in the vicinity is deprived of reasonable means of ingress and egress. And this exhibit is to show you that there's no property owner that's going to be deprived of ingress and egress. The technical review committee recommended approval of this request at their November 3rd, 2023 meeting with the following conditions, and these conditions are, are shown on the screen. That the city, the city shall retain a 20-foot utility easement over existing utility lines until such time as the lines are no longer needed for the public. Two, that the street closure shall not be final until a plat is recorded combining the area within the right-of-way with adjacent properties. And three, if any of the sidewalk that is along O'Farrell Street falls within the right-of-way that is proposed to be closed, that the public pedestrian, that a public pedestrian access easement shall be dedicated to the City of Greensboro with that recorded plat. With that, I can, is there any questions that you have?
Do we have any questions? No, we don't. Does the applicant wish to speak? Appears that there is no need for...
Do we just need a simple motion?
We'll close the public hearing.
Thank you. And make sure to incorporate the conditions. You don't have to restate them, you can say as read.
In regards to agenda item PLP23-25, White Moore Street, street closure request, with the conditions that the city shall retain a 20-foot utility easement over existing utility lines until such time as the lines are no longer needed for public use. Two, the street closure shall not be final until plat is recorded, combining the area within the right-of-way with the adjacent properties. And number three, if any side of the sidewalk along O'Farrell Streets falls within the right-of-way proposed to be closed, a public pedestrian access easement shall be dedicated to the City of Greensboro.
Excellent, Jeff.
So moved.
Second, Catherine Maggott.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Ms. Maggott. Any discussion? We'll take a vote. Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Mr. Gilmer?
Aye.
Ms. Maggott?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor, aye. Mr. Egbert?
Aye.
Ms. Glass?
Aye.
Thank you. This is a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, December 19th, 2023 City Council Meeting. This concludes our public hearings for the evening. I want to really appreciate the staff. We didn't get an opportunity to thank every single person that was part of the fabric this evening, but there were many people in the lobby and at the doors and everywhere else that were very helpful.
White cloud.
You can have two. And we appreciate the staff's foresight and anticipating everything that we needed to cover for this evening. So, we're very appreciative and appreciate the cooperation from the members of the commission. Welcome again, Mr. Gilmer.
I want to thank our chair and vice chair for their leadership of tonight. I don't think we'd be getting out of here this early had it not been for you working with staff and staff working with you. And that, to me, is, is excellent teamwork. Thank you all, really, from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
We have seven next month.
Plus the one we just continued?
Yes. That includes the one we just continued.
No, we didn't.
Well, there was one from earlier, there was one from earlier in the agenda that was continued. That includes that.
That's right. Anything else from the planning department?
We don't have anything.
Do we have anything else from commissioners? It is a season of gratitude, and I'm certainly grateful for all of you. So, thank you very much. I hope everyone has an excellent Thanksgiving and doesn't eat too much turkey. Thank you. We're adjourned.